There's Michelle just waiting on Peter now. And there's Peter. All right, so moving back into open session at 7:15. The first thing I actually want to do is I want to request a change to the agenda to the school committee. I want to move the chairs comments up and then move the citizens comments after the chairs comment. Excuse me, and the reason is just to give everybody a chance to sort of log back into the meeting. In case they have a, you know, want an opportunity to speak. So all those in favor of changing the agenda. Michelle Bailey.
Yes.
So Jean Lee.
Yes.
Stacy Metrick.
Yeah.
Ty Prima.
Yes.
Michelle Horgan.
Yes.
Peter Walczek.
Yes.
David Plato's a yes. I think that's everybody. My screen's very full. You know, so like I said, I just wanted to begin tonight's meeting a little differently. Take this time to give my chair support after moving out of executive session. I'd give everybody who wants to attend tonight's meeting a chance to do so. I also want to make sure that anyone who wish to speak at tonight's meeting has adequate time to enter the meeting. Be able to participate in our citizens comment session. The opportunity to have better attended meetings in a more dot in more dialogue. With the community is one of the silver linings I found in these trying times. Since March 12th, this committee, the district administration, education leaders, and most notably our teachers. Have put in uncountable hours to try and keep our district running as smoothly as possible. And try to plan for an unknown future about our our schools and what our world will look like next week, next month, and next fall. Excuse me. The Hamilton when I'm regional school system is a shining example of the community we live in. Our commitment to be better is held accountable by you, the community. It's also represented in the actions you take as a community. Our commitment to being better was made clear by yesterday's march in Hamilton protesting the census murder of George Floyd. While we're small, we are mighty. Hundreds of our community members came together to say that this is not okay. We expect better and we're willing to do whatever it takes. This is a much larger conversation, but it needs to be addressed. While we should be proud of our community's commitment, the reality is this is only our beginning. We still have our own inner community battles to fight. Hamilton Oneam is not above racist comments and practices from graffiti found around town. To disparaging comments of community groups and social media, even here in our own school committee meetings. Two weeks ago, our school committee budget hearing. We had two commentators in our chat session. He used disparaging comments and hate speech. Excuse me during our meeting. Earlier tonight, I had a community member, Chris Coughlin, call me concerned as he had heard. That one of those in the chat session had used his family name and personally named his son in the conversation. He wanted to assure our community that it was not him or anyone in his family. And that's where I helped to find these people feeling very uncomfortable that his son was named in this conversation. Excuse me. That being said, as we move to our citizen comments section of our meeting. I want to readdress the school committee's commitment to giving the public an opportunity to speak. But to also remind everyone that anyone that becomes disruptive in the comment section will be immediately removed from the meeting. We asked that anyone wishing to speak, please raise your hand in the comments and we will add you to the meeting. To have an opportunity to speak. Each speaker is allowed a three minutes to speak. And as a rule, the school committee does not answer the citizens comments directly. We do, however, try to address community concerns during the course of our regular meeting. And we'll do our best to answer your questions in order to help the community best navigates with these confusing times for our district. Excuse me. At this time, I want to open the floor to anyone who would actually want to. Address the committee. So just do so by raising your hand in the chat and we will move you to the main room.
Vinnie, is the chat open to attendees?
Nope. Let's see if they can see it.
All panelists and attendees.
Sorry, I was on mute. It says it is.
Yes, great.
Okay, I definitely want to just give it another minute and I appreciate your patience. You know, for those of you who are actually here to address, but. Last week, we actually moved on before someone had a chance to speak and I want it in. That's the last thing I want.
Any while we're waiting, can you see if you can bring Peggy into the panelist group?
Yes, of course. Sorry. Sorry Peggy, hold on. I'll go through the whole list and see if I missed anyone.
David, there is a question in the chat.
Yeah, I do see that. I believe in that's Amy De Simone. And I see that the what is the situation with the teacher union contracts due to delayed one of town meeting? We will probably address, I imagine that we're going to address that a little bit later on in the meeting.
Got my three minute timer. Anybody wants to talk? I'm all ready.
When you have that executive session, it throws everything off.
It is amazing though, when you time people, you're like, three minutes actually is so long. You don't realize it when you speak, but.
Has there been an update from the state on funding? Will that be addressed? So. I believe that's also in the timeline. I'm going to share out the timeline. And unfortunately, a lot of these answers aren't as concrete as you'd like to. As I'm sure you're looking for.
So, so are you wanting to answer those questions or we're going to?
I think, and I think we can, I think both of those will be answered sufficiently later. I'll actually, I can't say that because. I don't think there's, we've gotten any sufficient answer to two solid months now from about this stuff. But I do feel comfortable moving on at this point and I don't have the agenda in front of me. So, yes, I completely, I understand. Just want to make sure we have the transparency and people aware of where we stand. I agree with you fully, Amy. Excuse me, and we are doing our best. In trying to keep everyone as updated as possible. The system is, the situation is fluid and very dynamic. And it just seems like every day when we have to have a direction to move in. That everything sort of changes just enough to make all our plans sort of moot at that point. So. Moving on to new business. The leadership team is here to present the remote learning model. So I'll turn this over to Julie to introduce everyone and thank you for being here, guys.
So there is one question about putting, can we put ourselves in gallery view? I believe that's something that each end user does. So you can choose to put us in gallery view, but we can't control how you view us.
That's right.
Right, I believe you're right. It could be the upper right hand corner where it says speaker view. Then if you hit the grid, it's gallery view.
So it says gallery view is not working on there and I don't know if that's something we're doing, Vinnie, or.
It might be because it's a webinar.
They're saying they can't change it, but wouldn't our our last one would have been? A webinar also?
Yeah, last one was a webinar, yes. I don't see anything to change it to gallery view, but let me see if I can do it on the website.
Well, and we're about to share our screen, so that is going to impact the gallery view anyways, once we do that. Hopefully, at least as people speak, leadership team, as we speak, just identify yourself because folks may not be able to see your face. When, once the screen is shared. Did we decide that you'd like me to share my screen and then I'll work through the slides that way? Okay. Alrighty, Vinnie, I just need to be able to share my screen. Sorry to make you bop back and forth over there. You're doing a great job. So.
You're good.
Okay, so tonight, the leadership team has prepared for you and the community an update on our remote learning model and how things have been going. In the district across the grade levels and you're going to get a chance to hear from a variety of members from the leadership team. They have been, we have been meeting for the first eight or nine weeks. We were meeting three times a week. Just to stay on top of changing guidelines, making sure we're talking about the needs of our students and our staff and keeping everyone supported. We've learned a ton in this short period of time. And we also are very cognizant of the reality that we're likely to be in this remote learning mode again. We don't know yet if that's how we'll start the year, but we do anticipate at some point, depending on how the virus behaves and how all of us behave. That the likelihood of us being in a remote model is, is pretty high. So we wanted to share with you some of the lessons that we've learned, some of the successes that we've had, some of the behind the scenes stuff that goes on that you may not be aware of as a parent or a community member. And then also how we're thinking about what this might look like in the future. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to the leadership team and I'm going to try to navigate the slides for them while they're. Speaking tonight.
Thank you, Julie. I'll begin the presentation. We'll start with the high school, but the first slide, I think is the most important slide. Dave Palito underscored this in his statement, and I think we can't stress it enough how hard our staff faculty worked. From all angles, from counseling angles, from support angles, special ed and IEPs. Teaching in the classroom, trying to pivot as quickly as we did. I'm proud to be a part of the team and I think all the principals would agree that it was, this has been. An amazing transformation for our teachers and our staff. And then also our students to be able to shift gears like that from a very social opportunity into kind of being at home on your own with your. Family and trying to learn new things and we hope to present some of that tonight and some of the things that we've seen and some of the things we've experienced and some of the things that we. We continue to learn and then we'll all talk a little bit about some of the things we we look forward to, depending on the situation that we're in.
So I think most, most of us can recognize that voice, but in case you can't see his face, that's our high school principal, Principal Tracy. Well, this happened to me before I wasn't able to.
So what?
I'm just, did I, okay, alright.
What, what has, what has and is working for, for our teachers specifically is the consistency of the schedule. Zoom has been a huge opportunity. It's also been a good learning opportunity for our teachers. They've learned to. Use Zoom to not only record their asynchronous lessons, but also to have those face to face meetings with groups of kids. They've learned to use the breakout rooms so that kids can go off and discuss in smaller groups and then come back to the main group. Google Classroom has been, we really tweaked it along the way and how we all organize our information. The concentration on feedback and not grades has been big for a lot of our, our teachers to be able to have strong feedback with kids. And give them the opportunity to do it again and do it again and continue to improve. Asynchronous and synchronous lessons, the asynchronous lessons, I think most kids will say, and you can see it in the right hand column. Most kids would say the asynchronous lessons have been beneficial because they can go back. They can replay them again. They can revisit them. They can rewind them. They can check anything they, they. They, they may have missed along the way. And as a fun little thing, our teachers, you know, they, they no commute. They're at home. They're working at home. But it's, it's still, it's still a bit of a struggle for them. On the student side, Google Classroom for organizing. And I think a lot of kids learned and they're still learning how that can work for them in the best ways. The flexibility, teachers are really dropping assignments in the beginning of the week, giving kids the week to get things together, get things situated. And that, that has been extremely helpful. Our, our assignment setups, it took us a couple of weeks, probably three weeks to get the idea that. If we shifted to putting the assignments out on Sunday or Monday for the week, then kids would have an easier time trying to organize and get things ready. And then there have been some things like EdPuzzle that have been useful for kids along the way, which is, which is really a program that's used with teachers and videos that allows embedding of questions and, and things. So it's been, it's been a great opportunity for learning about ourselves and then also trying to figure out the shift to the ways of remote learning.
And Eric, when you say later class hours, you mean being able to sleep in, right?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we've learned our kids have very unusual, I'll talk about in a minute, very unusual sleep schedules now, but. They generally still email me at one in the morning and, and then sleep in right up to about a minute before class, so. Difficulties, the technology is not always reliable and I put on the teacher side, it really is on both sides. Some kids and families are having these issues as well, wrestling with three kids and one computer or. Two kids and two parents at home with, with one or two computers and iPad and a computer. So that, that's been a little bit of an issue for some of our families. The balance in family and school has been really clear, you know, we have all, we all know who has a dog. We all know who has children, babies, because they're in our videos with us and. Part of our new at home life is very visible to everybody, including our kids and families and on, on both sides. It's been hard for our teachers not to see our kids face to face. It's been very hard not to have that connection. It's important. It's why we do what we do. That energy that we get from our kids is amazing and you can see that throughout the school year as it goes up and down as we go in and out of various points of the school year. Lack of participation has been difficult. It's been hard to get all the kids involved. You'll hear from Kristen Lazar, Dr. Lazar will talk later about some of the things that she and her staff have been doing to really work to reach out to keep kids and families connected. Teacher connections with peers, you know, you see teachers during the day as you pop in and out of your teacher rooms. Your offices and the hallways, you don't have that anymore and. I'm proud to report that our weekly Zoom faculty meeting, which is optional, 55 minimum show up every single time because we need to see each other. We want to see each other and it's a great opportunity to say hi and see how things are doing. Special education demands have been amplified during this time. They've been really. Stretching our special ed staff, but also putting our teaching staff to the test to come up with ways to meet the needs of all of our kids. The lack of required attendance has, has been hard for teachers. They felt like if there was a required attendance that, that kids would be there. And everybody is lurking, working much longer days. I, I can speak for teachers that I know that are. Working during the day, trying to fit into the schedule, they, they working with their own kids at home and their remote learning and then. Having dinner and putting their kids to bed and then going back at it until nine, 10, 11 o'clock at night and getting up and doing it again. So our, our staff is really putting in some, some long days. On the student side, the loss of the social connections, that is the number one thing that comes up in every conversation with, with our kids. Lack of motivation, it's hard for some kids, not all kids have the ability to say, oh, I can do this at this time and organize that. And then the back to back to back Zoom calls, which is something we I think have all learned about together where kids are saying, I just had four in a row. Well, as adults, we have them during the day a lot and we know how exhausted we are, so we have to come up with some other ways to, to meet that need. The isolation, kids really felt initially like, okay, maybe this will go away, but then the reality of it was they were, they were at home. They were staying, sitting at home with their families and not able to go out and enjoy their friends and come to school. Go downtown and go to the movies and all those things kind of taken away. Time management organization has been difficult for some of our students and we've worked to try and help them with that by. Changing the way we use Google Classroom, changing the way we organize our, our. Assignments and, and things that are connected to kids and their schedules. Sleep schedules are absolute wreck and I think that goes in hand in hand with our, the last one managing anxiety and depression. And it, these, these two pieces of the puzzle for our kids have been extremely difficult. Our teachers have, you know, understood that and worked to understand, understand that and, and really been super flexible with kids. But it is hard for them to be able to manage the kind of isolation, try to figure out their schedule, try to figure out what's do. You know, missing their friends and really being pulled away and, and not able to connect at all. So those are the, those have been the difficulties at the high school level.
Eric, can you share your screen so they can see the slides? I think people might have trouble seeing it. Sorry.
Julie's sharing hers. I'm going to hand this part over to Brian Manigoni.
Good evening, everyone in Hamilton, Oneam, or wherever you are in the world.
Miss Manigoni, can I just do a little check in?
Sure, go ahead.
Are people saying they can't see the slides?
Correct, they're saying they can't see them.
Can you all on the panelist view see the slides?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, hmm. Let me see if I, I got that. Some people are saying, saying they can see the slides.
Yeah, no, we're getting some help from the chat section to sort of find some people if they double click, it looks like it, it might enlarge.
Okay, alright.
It appears that they're in like speaker view, so the slide becomes smaller.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Brian, to interrupt.
No problem.
You're on.
So, good evening again, everyone. This is Brian Manigoni. I'm the assistant principal at the high school. And I'm going to expand a little bit upon what Erica talked about previously. One of the things that we want to keep an eye on obviously is student engagement. You know, how well are they attending to their work? How much are they getting out of it? And it's, it's really hard, I think, to, to measure that accurately in the environment that we're in, but it does help to ask the question. So, you know, we asked the teachers what they saw. In terms of how kids were working in their classes and it's tough to looking at this graphic here. You know, say it, each one of these things acceptable, but a comparison, I think I can offer some commentary about it. In terms of the Zoom attendance, I think kids, they do get something out of it, but they do get a little bit exhausted by going to the Zoom sessions. Also, if they're occurring at 9:00 AM. That may be a few hours before they're actually thinking about getting out of bed. So that's, that's something for us to keep in mind, I think, as we move forward and certainly some of this can inform our design process. If we have to continue in remote learning. But I think encouragingly, the work completion, project completion is better than some of the Zoom attendance. You know, I would ask, is this where we want it to be? Again, it's, it's hard to say. You know, just reporting, this is, you know, what we see in our classes. What I can say though is that even with the grading system that we're using now in the. The remote learning setting, we're seeing more kids actually achieve credit during the quarters than we normally would. And, you know, perhaps that's due to some of the. Relaxation of expectations a little bit or more flexibility inserted into the learning process. But all in all, kids seem to be participating the best that they can right now. But we're going to want to take some of this information that we've gathered and use it as we move forward. Jump ahead if you would like, Julie. And so the question that we asked was, what do we do if remote learning does indeed continue to be our reality for a while? And there's a number of bullet points here, but there's a couple of things that I would emphasize. Over all of them, the idea of, or the dual ideas of flexibility and less is more. Offering flexibility to kids, I think is, has been a real benefit to the current situation. And one, one particular point I would bring up is time, time as a variable. A lot of times in school, time is a fixed constraint. You know, kids have 50 minutes to get this thing done. You have to do it at this certain time, whereas in the remote setting, kids may have more time to attend to a task. They can go back. And review some of the materials that they have from their teachers. They may be able to do it at a time that better fits when their brains are actually awake. So some of that flexibility is really important and I think also for the teachers as well. Having more flexibility in terms of how they're evaluating student work, how they're giving feedback. Those are going to be important things to keep in mind. The idea of less is more probably applies a lot to the curriculum. We're really going to have to focus on what are the important things we want our kids to know and to be able to do. Because in the remote setting, it's, it's just not as efficient as being in person. So I think from a time perspective, you got to really think carefully about, you know, what are we going to, what are we going to spend our time on? To make sure that kids are getting the most valuable experience that they can. Some of the traditional structures that we've relied upon in school that we have had to step away from, namely attendance and grading. We're going to have to take a closer look on that. My guess is that the state is going to be more directive about attendance in the future. They've been pretty lax with it here in the springtime, just because we've had to make such a quick pivot. But I would imagine that next year. Making sure that kids are engaging in the learning opportunities is, is going to be a point of emphasis, but also grading. You know, how can we provide kids with valuable feedback, maybe a little bit more nuanced than what we're giving now? But also can we use this as an opportunity to think carefully and closely about our existing grading practices? But kids, you know, may benefit a little bit more if we lean more towards our older grading practices, just to give them more feedback and more of an incentive. To complete some of their work. And the last thing that I would bring up is maybe offering kids some student professional development. We think quite a lot about offering the adults. Opportunities to, to figure out how to work in this digital distance platform, but do we, have we done that for our students yet? And I'm not so sure that we have. Have we talked to them about how to structure their days, how to plan out their time, how to make sure that you're submitting your work appropriately? You know, really how to carry yourself online because that's, this is going to be an important part of perhaps our experience moving forward, but also as they become adults too. So it's an opportunity, I think, for us to, to work with the students really specifically about, you know, how do you, how do you work in this distance setting? And finally, we thought we would just close here, the high school with an example of some student work that was done in a math class. And what the student was asked to do here was to develop the equation so that when they graphed it out, it would produce this figure. And certainly I would say that this is a project that, you know, was done while we were in school. But however, in this environment, you know, using digital media and a lot of the tools that are available through that particular. Platform, I think can encourage more of this kind of work. Especially if we, we focus on, as I'll go back to it, the less is more approach. So there, there definitely are some really cool things being done, both by our teachers and our students. And I think I want to close with the high school. Just saying that the incredible work done by our teachers to move quickly to a different setting by our students who really accepted it. And I'm not at all surprised. That they did the outstanding job that they did, but also to our parents as well. It, it's not easy. I think all of a sudden, having to see your kid at home all day long doing their learning. And I think that parents have done the absolute best that they can to support their kids through this. While at the same time also trying to maintain their own professional lives. So, thank you.
Great job, Brian and Eric. And at this time, I would invite Principal Harvey and Assistant Principal Level to talk about the middle school experience.
Thank you, Julie. I want to start really quickly by echoing exactly what Brian just said. The quick and emergency transition to remote learning by our students, teachers and families has been nothing short of amazing. People have picked up and really run with the ball. I know it's been an enormous amount. People have picked up and really run with the ball. I know it's been an enormous amount of stress on our teachers and our families and students, but they have really shined in this time. So I want to commend everyone for the great work they've been doing. So what is working well at the middle school? There's a lot of common threads with what you've heard just heard from the high school, as well as what you will likely hear from the elementary school. The flexible time on learning has has been great. Kids can explore things when they want and go into a deeper level with that exploration and things they're interested in. You know, in in the classroom, we might give them 50 minutes to explore a topic. At home, if there's a topic they're interested in, they might spend a week on it or longer. It does allow for some increased choice in student choice and agency, giving them some freedom to choose what they'd like to do and how they'd like to do it. And one piece that didn't occur to me, but we've seen a lot in is something I'd like to continue, is increased family involvement. I think the remote learning has really helped bridge that connection between the classroom and the home. And I think it is it's something that's really important for us as a district to capitalize on, whether we're in school, out of school, or some combination of the of the two. In our instruction, we're using Google Classroom. We were not as adept at Google Classroom as the high school was. We were loosely using it at the middle school, but not in a formal way. And it does allow us to give a lot of one to one feedback to students on their work that is time consuming, but the focused on increased feedback over grades, I think, is has been outstanding. We've shifted to a week at a glance planning. So rather than, you know, you find out Monday night's homework on Monday night, we give a sort of an overview of the week, and it it does help students and teachers plan ahead and sort of direct their focus. And a lot of the on online data, online tools and learning options have helped us increase some data collection about what our students can and can't do. I think it's really important, though, to say that that does not replicate or replace what you can see from a student in the classroom. I think being there with a student, there's not a better way to do it. Our technology department, our IT department, as well as our technology support staff have been amazing. I have talked to a lot of districts and you know, every time I have a conversation with them, they are impressed with the level of professional development and support that we have in this district. And if we hadn't had those things in place already with the appropriate staff and resources, this whole thing could have fallen flat in March. So I want to give huge credit to them. It has also helped our teachers and our students and and likely our parents as well improve their digital skills. So we are continually learning and and building on those skills. And as I mentioned earlier, it's strengthened our parent and teacher relationships. And I do want to see that improve more as we move forward. And I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Level for these next two slides.
Alrighty, I'm Liz Level. I'm the Assistant Principal at the middle school. It's been amazing to see how learning has changed and the innovation and the I think of words that Eric Tracy used, amplifying and just I'm so impressive, the new evidence of kids learning. So through being able to make their own decisions and their choices and the flexibility of the time, they're using TikTok videos, they're using other online platforms to show their creativity and understanding of science concepts and performance of children's books, such as in Mandarin. There are new art forms through you'll see we have, we have an example here, creating memes with art. And we felt that this was particularly meaningful for our experience right now. And another aspect in learning is that our introverts and and some of our students who are perhaps more shy are able to express themselves more openly, more fully, able to do presentations, which is reducing their stress in the larger classroom setting. Instruction has just has just exploded. Our teachers are diving into all kinds of different formats of instruction. They're flipping instruction. They're using EdPuzzle, Zoom platforms, Google Classroom and in ways to connect with their students and students are able to do that asynchronous learning where they can examine things more than once, which is the kind of experience they need to be able to have. It differentiates. It allows us to differentiate better for our students. As well, through this instruction, through these flipped models, our teachers are still able to visually connect with our students. That our students can see their faces, can hear their voices. So it keeps that connection alive. Technology and application, we had our one act performance, which is a play that's written and performed by our students. And in this situation, they could not do a live performance. And instead, they use Zoom to create the performance of their play entirely digitally. And in using these digital platforms to still create communal kinds of experiences is is just remarkable. And I have to say too that consistently, we are hearing that while there's a difficulty in making sure we see our everybody, there's a deepening of relationships and there's an expansion of empathy. Our our teachers are getting to know our students in a different way, and our students are getting to know our teachers and we're connecting with families and able to be very human in in this awkward Zoom platform. So that's it's been a an interesting and probably really important expansion of our connection with families. What's missing? The quote, I think, says it all. The fun, joy and spirit of working in person with kids. Educators want to be with their students, and this has has challenged us that way. The best part of our days right now are Mr. Hovey and I are having fifth grade meetings, and we're meeting with the fifth grade students, and that's really so exciting. So the way that is experienced is for the learning in classroom. You you lose the some of the spontaneity. You lose the ability to nudge a student into taking some risks. Our middle schoolers especially are very dependent upon collaborative learning to develop their social skills and to bring meaning to their learning experience. So this makes it much more challenging to try and to try and still build a community feeling for them and collaboration when they're not able to sit and just work through things together in person. Instruction, it's that real time student support. In that moment, there's teachers are able to do many, many checks with students as they're instructing and and we lose some of that that ability to to touch base with a student really privately and and in that moment. Truthfully, the technology, what's missing, maybe maybe an internet connection is kind of tough for people. But but for the most part, it's the human element. The technologies, as Mr. Hovey has said, has been fabulous. The support from our IT staff. So what you get down to is it's the relationships. It's that the way we typically form relationships with just the face to face personal connections. It's greeting the students at the door. Mr. Hovey and I are always there at the door in the morning greeting the students, and we don't have that at this at this time. It's hard to build rapport. It's hard to build a community online. I think we were fortunate this year that it happened in the spring where we'd already developed our relationships with students and that that helped carry us through. And our colleagues are used to collaborating with one another. And we're used to seeing each other in the halls. Eric Tracy said it, you know, you bop into somebody's class, and in this instance, it has to be more formal. It has to be more scheduled. So there is that human element, which is very challenging and and honestly can't be replaced. So, back to Mr. Hovey.
Thank you, Liz. And as we all know, we dove headfirst into remote learning. There was little planning and we shifted course several times based on new information from the state and what was working and what wasn't working. But some improvements that we can make should we move forward with remote learning is we need to be able to increase student engagement. When you have a student in a classroom with you, you can engage with them on many levels. When they're sitting in front of a screen or worse yet, not sitting in front of the screen, it's difficult to bring them into that learning environment. At the middle school, we have learned very quickly that we need to build and strengthen our students' executive functioning skills. We need to spend the time to explicitly teach them how to organize their online presence and how to organize their time. These are not skills that they come with in sixth grade, most of them. And some students struggle more than others. We also need to teach the online platforms like Google Classroom, as well as other online areas, make sure they understand the expectations and the skills required to be successful in those environments. For our instruction, we need to develop uniform procedures, tools and strategies with online tools. How do we make sure our kids are having a similar experience across the board in our school? And then what are accurate measurements of learning in an online environment? You know, when you have a room full of kids, you can give them an assessment and you know that that's their work, because you're watching them do it. It's a little bit difficult, more difficult to assess that if you can't see their face, or there may be somebody else there doing it for them. Who knows? So there's there's a lot of room for growth there. Equitable access to technology and supplies at home is is going to be something we have to consider. Again, the IT department has done an outstanding job sharing, giving out technology to families that need it. But it's difficult to do a painting lesson or a drawing lesson when you don't know or that everyone has the supplies they need at home. And it makes it difficult to branch out into different learning environments. Our teachers have been extremely creative in bringing in ideas and lessons that anyone can access. But we want to make sure that everyone has what they need. And the biggest one, I think, is the social emotional relationships. We want to continue to directly build and support parents and their remote learning skills. This is a new challenge for most of our families is how do I manage my 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 family life as well as trying to support my child in their education? And our staff are encountering the same thing, particularly those with young children. Balancing our remote teaching and home childcare is a huge challenge for our staff. And then, as Liz mentioned earlier, it's fairly, I mean, it's not easy, but we can sustain a community in a remote learning environment, but to build that community from the ground up, particularly with our incoming fifth graders and any new students, is going to be more of a challenge online. So we need to work depending on what our situation is next year. That's gonna be some work for us. And then balancing the home and school life. I think Eric alluded to it that I think any all of us on this call are working far more than we have in the past, and that line between our home life and our school life has become blurred, if not erased. And I think that can be unhealthy in the long run, so we need to make sure that we find that balance. But overall, I think, given the circumstances, given the fact that we are still living in a global pandemic pandemic and that we were thrown into this, I think the district has done an outstanding job, and I I want to commend everyone who's taken part in that.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey. Up next, we have our elementary schools. So I will introduce to you our three elementary principals. Principal Clifford, Principal Shettyak and Principal Sherston. Carolyn, you're on mute.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Shettyak, the Winthrop principal. I'm gonna talk about some of the things that have, sorry, I'm looking at my wrong slide. Let me start by saying our primary goal at the elementary level was for Bueker Cutler and Winthrop to operate as one school during the remote learning period. We wanted to ensure that all elementary students across the district were going to be provided with an equitable learning experience, and it took a lot of work on the part of the teachers, but I think they did a great job. Teachers from all three elementary schools collaborated at least weekly, if not more often, with their grade levels to plan learning boards each week. And by working together, the teachers have had an opportunity to deepen their relationships with their colleagues. And during during weekly planning meetings, the teams identified major themes for the week, and then different teachers took responsibility for planning lessons in each content area, resulting in content area experts in a cohesive sequence for lessons. It also allowed teachers to support one another when crisis occurred, if their grade levels are in their families and people needed to step back a little bit, which happened a few times in the last three months. The learning boards definitely evolved over time with the guidance from Desi. At the beginning, it was seemed a little bit more chaotic, but once Desi determined that new content would be introduced, grade levels and curriculum coordinators used the power standards identified by Desi to create learning board activities at each grade level. The learning boards provided an asynchronous learning structure for students to access activities and included video lessons to introduce new material, either recorded by teachers or from other sources like investigations and Brain Pop. And I want to reiterate something that I think both Eric and Craig had said about how hard the teachers had to work to learn new technology platforms to be able to do this. So in addition to teaching kids, they spent a lot of time teaching themselves, and we couldn't have done it without the elementary literacy, I mean, elementary library specialists who have been doing all of the technology supports. It's been just an amazing effort on their part. Zoom meetings have been invaluable in keeping students connected to their teachers and their peers. Teachers have tailored their meetings to meet the needs of their students. Whole class, small group lunch bunches or snack packs, or providing academic support, and then also for one to one individual check ins for students. Teachers have been providing drop in hours for students and families so that they can answer questions about some of the learning activities or just to check in and say hi. One of fifth grade teachers at Winthrop have kids who want to drop into the office hours and just chat for the whole hour. So it's been a really important tool, and I think it's been said, it's the only way that we've made these connections work. At the elementary level, TAs have been vital in providing additional support by helping to plan learning activities with the teachers they work with, recording read alouds that are posted, and then staying connected to the students that they work with in the classrooms, as well as providing their own small group tutorials. CSO has been used as the primary tool for homeschool communication at most grade levels. Teachers post weekly learning board and Zoom meeting schedules with links on Friday afternoons. That was definitely a learning curve for us. After some feedback from families, we learned they needed a little time to plan, and by posting on Monday morning, they weren't not able to kind of do their jobs at home and have their kids planned out. So we made that adjustment that the everything was posted on Friday afternoons, and it seemed to have been a good adjustment for families. The teachers then also post a morning message each day highlighting activities or Zoom meetings that students and families need to be aware of. Google Classroom has been used primarily at grade five to post learning activities from the learning boards. Students have been able to turn in their work or post videos and share fun activities with their classmates on both platforms. And many students have been inspired to try something new after seeing some of the things that their classmates have done. For students and families, using CSO and Google Classroom and email to communicate with their teachers has also been vital. Depending on the grade level, students have posted their work either on CSO and Google Classroom, and I know some teachers at the upper grades migrated from CSO to Google Classroom to make posting student assignments and having students turn in their assignments for feedback. It seemed to work better for the fifth grade teachers to do that via Google Classroom. It seemed to work better for the fifth grade teachers to do that via Google Classroom. And it's been, we've gotten some good feedback about that. And the platforms have also been a great vehicle for students to share ideas with classmates. The asynchronous nature of the learning boards and videos, as both Brian and Eric had said, and Craig also said, that have allowed the students and families to create schedules to best meet their needs. Students and parents can watch the instructional videos multiple times if necessary. Students can spend time on assignments as needed. If there's something that they really enjoy or they need to spend more time on, they don't have the time constraints of somebody saying, okay, math is over, it's time to start writing. And that, I think, has been a really important adjustment for many of our students. Students are supported academically and socially through their Zoom meetings. And online platforms like Lexia and Freckle have provided students with differentiated skill development and practice to supplement their other learning activities. I think one of the most powerful outcomes of remote learning at the elementary and actually at all three levels has been that students have been given the opportunity to have more agency with their learning. And a lot of learning has happened through real-world contexts. So some of the successes that we have seen are that many more opportunities for our kids to like show what they've learned through different presentations rather than having to just write a paper. Kids are putting in videos and weather reports or science experiments. They can talk on video about their understanding of math and science to really explain their thinking rather than just taking a test or filling out a worksheet. Some kids have been doing some great biographies and they are posting those. And there's also been some opportunities for kids to demonstrate creative projects above and beyond the curriculum. There's a fourth grade student at Winthrop who's doing a cooking show. There are students who are doing stop-motion animation films. Kids are learning new languages on platforms that their parents have signed them up for. We've learned that there are kids that are raising all kinds of wild animals and pets. And kids are planting gardens and showing us the progress. So it has been, and this also was mentioned, but this has been a glimpse into our students' lives. And for students to have a little bit of a glimpse into our lives, they see our pets, they see our kids. We see their houses and their pets and their brothers and sisters and their interactions. And it actually has been a way for us to really forge deeper relationships, surprisingly, in, by not being together.
All right, so I'm Ben Tristan, the principal at Bueker. As we have gone through this, we have reflected on what is missing from our current model at the elementary level. And I would like to talk a little bit about that. The first thing that we're missing is that art of teaching. So much of what we do with students is the subtle things that happen face-to-face with kids that you can't really do over Zoom, those little check-ins that we have just can't happen through the Zoom environment the way that they do in face-to-face. Our collaborative learning opportunities for students are very different. We like to have kids work in small groups and flexible groups in the classroom. Not something that's really difficult to do with the, with our current remote model. The learning processes is something that we really celebrate and try to explore in the classroom. And that's been difficult, not having kids with us. We can't, we can't see them learning. What we see as the product of their learning, we don't see actually them going through that process of struggling and having those aha moments. We have lost some of the differentiation, some of those individual check-ins that we can do, some of that art of teaching that I spoke to. We can do some of this through remote learning, but not to the extent that we're able to in regular school. We've lost some of those face-to-face connections with students. And this is hard for everything, for everyone. You know, I tell folks a lot that everything we do in education, we do through relationships. And as folks have mentioned, establishing and maintaining those relationships is really different when you try to do that through a computer screen versus face-to-face. And we've also lost that teacher-to-teacher connection, that support for each other. You know, we don't have the ability to pop into each other's classrooms and say hello or pass each other in the hallway to get that support. On the student family side, that real-time feedback around student work is missing. It's different. You know, you can't walk past a student and give them quick feedback in the classroom, a quick thumbs up. You know, to see something that they're struggling with, give them a little bit of help is different in this environment. Project-based learning is not the same. Projects are big and projects are messy and they require a lot of materials. And it's hard to do this equitably through remote learning. Our students have lost connection to their peers. I know this talked about the other levels. This is so important. And I know that when the counseling folks, when Dr. Lazar talks, she's going to speak about this as well. We have these inconsistent and competing schedules. You know, we have home schedules, parents, families that are working remotely. We have our school schedules. And how do these family responsibilities impact our family's abilities to support students? You know, a lot of what our students are doing with remote learning needs some help from their families, which is different from the middle and high school level and trying to make sure that the household demands, how are those balanced versus the school demands of remote learning? And we started out with, and we still have a variety of platforms that students and families are using. We tried really hard not to force teachers into consistent platforms during remote learning. We felt that it would be unfair for us to not be able to provide that in-person support to teachers. So that has led to lots of different kinds, some CSO, some Google Classroom, various other platforms. And for, particularly for families with multiple children, they are having to navigate multiple platforms as well. And finally, we're all dealing with the occasionally unreliable internet. You know, we all have been on a Zoom call where we have the error that came up that says your internet is unstable. And that has forced some scenarios where students or staff have to go to a, shut their video off and go only to audio to get a better connection. And that, again, really affects, you know, the quality of those relationships. You know, face-to-face is way better, Zoom with video is nice. And when you go down to just audio, it's a different kind of experience. It's hard for those involved.
Hi, I'm Jen Clifford, the principal of Cutler School. And I'm going to share now about some of the ways that we're thinking about improving our model if we move forward with more remote learning. I think you'll hear a lot of commonalities from all three levels because even though our students span a wide range of ages, we have a lot of overlap with both the middle and high school. So we're thinking about more frequent, shorter interactions with students. We know that younger students do better with more routine interactions, smaller groups, and shorter meetings. It can be really difficult to follow a crowd discussion on Zoom, even for adults. Never mind for those five or six-year-olds who have a hard time doing that in person and are developing those skills. So we're thinking hard about how to create these interactions next year so they can be most beneficial. We would also like to continue a blend of synchronous interactions and asynchronous lessons. Again, we want to think about the synchronous in real time and asynchronous, which can be accessed at any time as both really important learning opportunities. We use real-time interactions for building classroom communities and relationships. One of the biggest challenges for all families has been for students to not be able to see friends through all of this. So these synchronous meetings have allowed students to continue interacting with friends and teachers who are all important parts of their lives. And those asynchronous opportunities allow students to watch lessons at times that work for them. And they can be watched multiple times. We don't want anyone to have to miss a meeting because a device wasn't working or somebody in the house couldn't help them and then be at a disadvantage when it comes to learning new material. We really want to make sure everyone has access, which is why we've been committed to presenting new material asynchronously. We also are thinking about master scheduling of Zoom meetings. And we problem-solved and fine-tuned our schedules as we built them. But moving forward, we would anticipate setting specialist schedules across three buildings, standardizing grade level meetings and schedules for routine consistency. We really try to be mindful of siblings in classroom in case they're sharing a device. A computer just does this thing where everything blanks out, okay? But we really know that we can be more mindful in our scheduling if we're starting this planning ahead. And on the theme of consistency, we would also like to find more consistency through our platforms and our tech resources. We, starting this in the middle of a pandemic and pivoting almost overnight to a remote learning platform, we really didn't want to push everybody to force or force any teachers to use things they weren't familiar with. So we started with a variety of resources, some of which were used previously. And we've also brought in some new resources in this time. We've sought out technology that's aligned with our curriculum. And most of those resources have been free during this time. So we're working hard with teachers to identify resources we'd like to continue with using in the future, realizing that we need to really ideally have one communication platform that all families can access easily. Same theme with streamlining passwords and technology access points. So as we streamline platforms, we also need to streamline access to these resources. And we're learning about tools we can use to do this. So single sign-on logins where students can use a single tool to log into multiple accounts and other ways to simplify access or things we're working on to really increase student independence in this remote learning environment. We also know that we need to ensure technology and internet availability continues for all families. We shifted to remote learning without the benefit of devices for students. So families have worked with us to obtain devices for student use. But moving forward, we need to ensure that everyone has consistent access. We are not a one-to-one with devices and students at the elementary level or even close to that. So we know we need to make some decisions if we're remaining in a remote environment about how we make sure everyone continues to have access to adequate technology. And we have been provided with amazing trainings and support by our tech team and our library media specialists. But we also need to plan ahead and think about tech support structures for teachers, students, and families. Moving forward, we'd like to build out these opportunities and ensure that families can have ways to solve tech issues quickly because a second grader on a Zoom call with a microphone that does not work really interrupts their ability to participate in that call and for their classmates to be able to hear them. So we want to be able to problem-solve those types of issues with families more efficiently. And probably the most important bullet on this slide, we want to focus on building relationships and connections to ensure that students feel comfortable. Our primary focus will remain ensuring that students feel secure with relationships with teachers and peers in order for them to be ready to learn. This is going to be challenging if we're starting a new school year, but we have several ideas about how to make this happen if we remain in a remote environment. Supporting students' social emotional development is going to be our most important focus as we come back to school in the fall. And our amazing faculty is ready to tackle that challenge. I'll turn it over now to Dr. Lazar.
Thank you, elementary principals. Dr. Lazar, school counseling.
Hi, I am Kristin Lazar. I'm the director of school counseling pre-K to 12. So I work with all the counselors in the district. And I have to give them a huge shout-out that they have been doing amazing work and have been reaching out to students and to families. And, you know, as people have mentioned, it really does become a 24/7 job. But they have been working really hard and really reaching out and providing support to the students and to families alike. So I wanted to, on the next slide, I wanted to remind us all, and I know that Eric had presented this at a earlier school committee meeting, the Maslow's hierarchy of needs during COVID-19. And school counselors really work on every tier of these hierarchy of needs pyramid. So every single one of these things that we're spending our days making sure that our students and families have their needs met. And then, you know, when you look at the top of this, the very top of that is school. So all of these base tiers are really where we're focusing a lot of our time in addition to spending time to make sure that they're accessing what they need with their academics and that they're connecting with teachers. And if there's a student that's missing, we are, the counselors are calling home and they're sending emails. And they're really trying to make sure that there is a connection with students to school and families to school and teachers to students. And it's, they've been doing a lot of work and it's very remarkable how much connection that they've actually made with their students during this time. And on the next slide, some of the ways that we have been supporting our students and families. Of course, all of the things that the school principals have presented, we are all part of that. We're part of the teaching staff as well. So we have been doing similar things. They've, the counselors have been holding Zoom meetings, having office hours. They've been calling students. Many of the school counselors have set up Google Voice. So they're actually reaching out to students. I've been in Zoom calls where students have actually called the counselors right then and there. And the counselor's like, I gotta go do this, which is great. You know, that the students are feeling, especially at the high school level, are feeling comfortable enough to kind of reach out. And similar to what we would have done if we were on campus where students would drop in and see us in our office, that they're feeling like they can call or they can connect with the counselors at any given moment, which is great. Counselors have also been attending classes at the elementary level, middle school level. They've been dropping into classes and, you know, reading books and doing all those things that normally happen, but they're just doing this now in a digital format. We've even had counselors that have done social distancing home visits that have gone to speak with students. They've stood in the driveway while students have been up on the front porch and they've had conversations with them. So it's a very highly dedicated staff that I'm very proud to be part of their team. And to, you know, walk with them through these difficult times where counseling is definitely a people profession. So not having a person in front of us does become difficult, but they've all managed it remarkably well. Another thing that we've done is we've sent out Google Forms, particularly in the high school, I know middle school has done it too, but we've done Google Form check-ins. At the beginning of our remote learning, the Google Form check-ins, we're going out every Tuesday and we were getting great responses. And it was a way for us to collect some data to see how students were doing, how they were managing their self-care, what their needs were. It's, I've loosened it up a little bit where now our seniors have kind of completed, where we're going to just do one probably final check-in. The last time we did it, a couple of weeks ago, I only had 23 responses. Where in the past, I've had many, many more. So I think that students are starting to get a little tired, as we all are at this point. But I have to say that most of the data from those Google check-ins, the students have been doing really well with their self-care. A lot of students are exercising and they're doing the right things and the things that they need to do. And the students that we've been worried about, we have definitely, you know, they've given us their contact information, we've reached out to them. So we're all trying to take care of each other, which is great. On our remote learning website, there are weekly newsletters and weekly activities that at all different, all three levels, the counselors are posting and updating. At the high school level, a lot of that information is going out through Google Classroom, which each, each grade level has their own transitions. Google Classroom that is run by the counselors. And we've also spent a lot of time connecting families to outside mental health resources and community resources such as food banks and some parent support groups. So we've been providing that kind of background for them and still connecting our students and families to the resources that are out in the communities. So some of the things that are definitely working well is the small, especially in the elementary level, small group Zooms that are keeping all the children connected to us and the children connected to the school as well as to each other so that they can talk and meet in small groups. It's also been great to be flexible with students. People have mentioned, the other principals have mentioned about, you know, students are able to get the rest that they need. And we know that sleep is important, especially for our adolescents. We've also, what also has been working well is holding individual Zoom calls and being able to have that contact and to be able to just have eyes on students is sometimes a really helpful thing to be able to do. Some things that we have some continued needs with, again echoing what the principals have already presented. But it's really maintaining that connection with the school. We do get worried when we don't hear or see from a student, you know, in a week or they've never attended a Zoom class. We're not sure what's going on with them. And it's really difficult to not be able to just call them to your office or to go and walk with them or to go and do things with them and find them in person. So it can get frustrating at times if we can't connect. But, you know, we still want them connected to us and connected to the school. So that's where the phone calls come in place and the emails and all of those other ways, going to the house, doing drive-bys, things like that. It's been very difficult, again, not having that face-to-face, that human connection with students living in a 2D world has been, it's been challenging at times. And also staying connected to our most at-risk students. There are students that just don't want to engage or for whatever reason aren't able to engage in this type of learning environment, that it becomes very difficult for them. So we have worries, we, you know, we do worry about that. We worry about the anxiety and the depression and some of the other mental health things that can come about from isolation. But I think that overall, we have been connected. But I think that overall, we have been connecting with our majority of our students, if not all of our students in one way, shape or form, either through faculty members, administration and through the counselors kind of going above and beyond what we would do in a normal, within our normal jobs. Some of our continuing needs would be supporting the parents. We do, on the remote learning website, we do have community resources that we've put up with a ton of resources and outreach places and phone numbers. But just supporting parents, parents now are, as we all know, are at home, you're at home with your children. Stress can bubble up. It's difficult. It's difficult to work and also raise a family all at the same time. So supporting our parents and knowing that, for the parents that are listening, that the counselors are here for you and that you absolutely can contact us and we want to be a resource for you. For the students developing that peer-to-peer relationship, having those social interactions, practicing their social pragmatics. All of that has been very difficult. Counselors have spent time like trying to go, be the go-between for parents to parents that they can set up Zoom meetings so that students can still see each other and hang out virtually with each other. Older students that might have FaceTime capabilities are certainly able to do that as well. And then, you know, identifying social students' emotional needs when you see them just for a brief moment in Zoom, sometimes they're hard to read. It is nice to be able to see students. But it's also difficult if we're not able to spend time with them to be able to really identify what their social emotional needs are. And eventually, we're eventually able to figure that out. But again, we want to just get the message across that for any student or a parent that sees a student struggling with anything to, able to, to contact us and that we're highly aware of it. And the counselors, we meet very frequently. And we're constantly talking about ways that we can continue to reach out and support our families during this time. And then my final shout out is to SRO Kent Richards, who has been amazing through all of this and has spent time, a lot of time in Zoom meetings with me and the counselors. And he absolutely has continued to be an active member of our support team. He has gone out and done some wellness checks on students. Nobody likes to see a police officer arrive, but Kent Richards is a very kind human being. And I think that the students do like to see him and know that, that there's a caring person that's going to show up and just say, hey, how can I support you and what's going on? So I do want to give a shout out to Kent. He is a valued member of working with our support team.
Thank you, Dr. Lazar. Up next, let's talk about professional development. How have our teachers and administrators been learning and growing during this process?
My name is Peggy McLean. I'm the Director of Curriculum for the District. Curriculum leaders around the curriculum pieces of the remote learning, but also with our teaching staff and thinking about working with the Technology Professional Development Committees. So we meet weekly, really assessing what the teachers' needs have been through, throughout the remote learning and how we provide that. And the Secondary Technology Integration Specialists and the three Library Media Specialists at the elementary level have been amazing. They've been incredibly responsive to what teachers' needs are. But there have really been two levels of challenge involved in the remote learning. The first is just that we, we were using technology before, but to different degrees. So the high school was probably the most advanced because they had one-to-one and therefore they were used to using technology on a regular basis to enhance their instruction. But it was to enhance their instruction. It was never even for the high school, the primary means by which they delivered instruction. So everyone needed to pivot to using technology, you know, as the exclusive mode for being able to deliver instruction. And how does that work? So that made people really have to learn some technology tools that they may never have used before. So there was a learning curve around that. But in addition, it really thinking about what instruction needs to look like. And this idea of synchronous versus asynchronous learning. So synchronous meaning in real time, face to face, whether it's over Zoom or some opportunity to interact in live time. And asynchronous usually through, you know, some sort of video instruction where kids can revisit that. But when you're in a brick and mortar school, almost all of your instruction is synchronous. Your homework would not be synchronous. That would be more your asynchronous piece, but it's almost all synchronous. So teachers really had to rethink their entire practice. And for teachers who have been teaching for a really long time and they're veteran teachers and really experts, it feels like being a first-year teacher again, because it's not something that you're used to doing. You're having to think about everything you're doing and still think about how you're delivering on that, the content and skills that you're trying to communicate to your students. So it's been a lot for people to absorb and to rise to that challenge and they've done really an amazing job with that. In terms of supporting them, the people who have been providing the trainings, we put together a website so that people could go to that when they had time, because they are trying to balance so many other priorities in their lives. And there are instructional videos there for them to learn everything from our, our basic platforms like Google Classroom and CSO to learning how to create their own instructional videos and make them interactive, how to use various tools to gather formative assessment. And then, you know, when we, when we pivoted to this originally, we left school on a Friday thinking we'd be back in two weeks. And we didn't come back the rest of the year. And had we known that, we may have provisioned differently, but kids didn't have their books. And a lot of the things that we would normally use to deliver content, we didn't, they don't actually have the tools in their hands. So thinking about how we would use online curriculum providers as well in order to deliver our content differently and digitally has been a challenge. So in terms of training, we do have that sort of asynchronous piece. And then we've had three levels of support live each week. So there have been scheduled trainings each week on things like, you know, introduction to Google Classroom or introduction to CSO. And then up to through some more advanced tools. All of those, these folks have also been doing hours where people can join. But really, they've been on call and they have been so responsive that the teachers reach out to them constantly over email and they get on a Zoom with them and just help them out in the moment, because that's the kind of support people have needed. They can't wait till the training is scheduled next Tuesday when they need to know something right now in order to put something together for their classes. So that has really been in the moment, really responsive professional development that we've been doing for teachers. That if, on the next slide here, we're looking at, thinking about for next year, we're, we don't know for sure, but we're making the assumption that there would be some form of continued remote learning next year. And how can we get out of this mode of reacting? This has really been emergency remote learning and really have it be intentional remote learning. And how do we do that differently? So we've structured two online classes for our staff this summer. We have, already have about 75 teachers signed up and enrollment for that is open until Friday. So I anticipate those numbers will go higher. And we have two different courses that we're offering. One is a tech toolkit for beginners. And this is part of the evolution that we've had during this time is really thinking about what are those tools that we want everybody to use? We've been experimenting with lots of different things. And there, a lot of the companies have been amazing. They've been so generous during the spring that they've offered most of their tech tools for free to schools through June 30th. So that's allowed us to try lots of things that we may not have been able to try in the past. But right now, we need to think about what do we want to use going forward, because they won't remain free. And we're going to need to think about where we want to put our resources. So we have a survey out to staff right now. And we're collecting, by this Friday, for us to really look at what people find were most helpful. Which ones do they think are essential that we absolutely need to continue to provide to them? Which ones are maybe we could do without and prioritize other things? So that is partly for budgetary reasons. I'm going to turn off my video because I'm losing my internet connection. Hopefully you can hear me still. But the, that is partially for monetary reasons, but it's also for training reasons. So we want to have core tools that everybody uses because it's going to make everyone's lives easier. It will help teachers to learn how to use those better. We can provide more targeted training. It's helpful to families, particularly families who have children in more than one grade level, to have consistent tools that their children are using. And to really think about what will that core toolkit be? And to train everybody who's enrolled in that course in those core tools. And we'll continue to provide training into the fall for those folks who can't participate over the summer. The other course that we're looking at is called leveling up remote teaching and learning. Because we really want to take the pause of the summer to reflect on how it's been going and to be much more intentional about what we're doing and how we feel we can best deliver instruction. So there are four themes to that course. One is the synchronous versus asynchronous learning. And when is it best to use a more like personal live setting? And when is it, when is it better to use something that is more of a recorded form of instruction? So that's one of the themes. I mean, is making lessons interactive. So really making sure that kids are engaged in a lesson. So how can we have it, have it be more fun, more engaging? Have kids feel like they're really connecting through their online classes? And what tools would we use to support that? Also that idea of digital evidence of learning. So when you're in the classroom, you have the opportunity to walk around, look over kids' shoulders, see how they're doing, answer a question in the moment or look at their work and give them very quick in-the-moment feedback. And that's missing from this environment. So we need to have different types of tools by which we can gather that formative assessment data and really know where kids are. And better tools for us to provide kids with that in-the-moment feedback or regular feedback that would inform their learning. So that's another theme of that. And then finally, universal design for learning. And universal design is a concept that came out of the field of architecture. So if you think of like a ramp to a building is really designed for people with disabilities. It was designed for people with wheelchairs to be able to access that building. But what we've discovered is that lots of other people also benefit from that same design. So if you have a parent pushing a baby stroller or somebody on a bike, they all access that and find that it enhances their experience. So that idea has been adopted in education for thinking about how do we design our instruction so that it meets the needs of students with disabilities, but actually meets the needs of a much broader range of students who would also benefit from those same accommodations. So really thinking about how does that apply to remote learning? And how can we be really strategically using our remote learning platforms to create, intentionally create that universal design to create better access for all of our students? So those are, so all the technological things that we're working on. One thing that's related to remote learning, but a little bit less directly, is we're going to be offering courses this summer on trauma and learning. And that might seem a strange thing to be offering, but when you think about trauma, the definition is of trauma is a reaction to an event that leaves one feeling helpless or with a loss of control, a sense of a loss of control, which this entire pandemic has been that experience for so many people and certainly for our students. And that has implications for learning. And so there's a lot of research around what the impact of trauma is on learning and what strategies one uses in order to be able to support students in their learning when they've had an experience like this. So we're training our teachers on that as well. We already had about 55 teachers involved in graduate courses as part of a four-course sequence through Leslie University. And we're offering an abbreviated version of that course this summer for teachers who are not able to participate in that. So they can also learn some of those strategies to support the social emotional needs of our students as we head into next year.
Thank you so much, Peggy. That is a very important point and I appreciate you taking the time to explain it clearly to our community. Up next, I invite Stacy Busek to talk to us about student services in a remote learning environment. And it looks like Maureen Smith, our Elementary Special Ed Coordinator, and Lindsay McGovern, our Secondary Special Education Coordinator, will also be joining her.
Yes, yeah, thank you. A lot of the, there's a lot of commonalities and a lot that the leadership team has spoken about already at each level. So I'm going to try not to kind of be repetitive to the same themes around what's gone well, what some of the challenges have been and what we need to continue to work on. But I'm going to start by talking a bit about kind of the trajectory of how remote learning started in the Student Services Department and where we are to this point. So at the start of the closure, the, we implemented and initiated weekly department meetings. So we've talked a lot about the demands of special education that were talked about, was talked about earlier. Our special education teachers were not only involved in school-based meetings, but we also had them involved in weekly department meetings. We were doing whole group across the district as we moved into the school closures. During that time, we focused on maintaining meaningful communications and connections with families. And we also started to work on providing educational supports and resources so students could maintain the skills that they had been taught and learned. We then shifted into individual remote learning plans. And part of this process was going through and choosing priority goals or priority benchmarks and objectives from student goals. And so once staff determined those, they were able to start to develop the plans. And all of our plans were based on individual needs. And one piece to the plans that was a requirement that came from guidance from the state or D E C was also to seek parent input into the individual remote learning plan. So staff phone calls were made to parents, emails. And what I did have here, and Dr. Kuchenberg, I don't know if you can click on the survey, if it will pop up. A creative way that one of our programs chose to communicate and get input from parents in the development of the individual remote learning plans was a survey. So they created a survey, this is for our younger students and in our intensive programming, which helped them to target specific goals or areas that parents wanted to focus on while their children were home and not in the school-based setting. So there's, there are different targeted needs from, you know, some of the challenges with behavior to working on toileting and things like that with our younger students and helping with the daily living skills for our younger students. Thank you. We can go to the next slide. Thank you. So within the teaching and learning, our staff was working in the same models as all of the teachers across the district. We had asynchronous learning going on. Our teachers developed learning boards. Teachers were developing recorded lessons. We were utilizing skill-specific online programs such as Renaturally, Lexia, Wizmo, which is an Orton Gillingham-based program, and then RAS Kids. And I do need to just thank the Ed Fund for, for some of their funding in our, in the purchasing of some of the tech online resources that we required for our students. Staff also worked really hard to develop learning packets. Other things we looked at for our students across the district were what types of equipment do they need? Some of our students needed things such as standards or walkers brought to their homes that were in school. We also looked at and ordered for some of our students sensory materials that were successful in school and were needed for home. A lot of our staff did a lot of porch drop-offs of materials and equipment. So we could support our students within the home environment. We also were utilizing synchronous learning through Zoom, again, just as everybody else was. And we focused on not just work with students, but also work with parents. Our staff also were in general education classrooms, supporting the class, the students within the synchronous classroom setting. And our specialists also were working through teletherapy to provide services to students as well. Teachers worked hard to collaborate with general education staff and the student services staff as best they could within this environment. It comes more naturally in a brick and mortar. So there, there was a lot of times where staff were meeting in smaller groups to discuss students and how we were going to support them. Utilizing teaching assistance for individual, small group and whole class activities was also really important. And Ms. Shettyak had talked about that earlier. They've been invaluable to this whole process in terms of providing some individualized support and also helping our staff with breakouts into small group activities as well. Another great example of how we utilized a TA was we had a staff member with a poor internet connection for a period of time. So we connected a TA with her so the TA could kind of moderate and let her know when the students weren't hearing and the language broke down. So that was another useful tool in helping us make the experience more successful for our students. There was a lot of work that needs to happen in special ed beyond just the direct teaching and learning experiences. So I wanted to talk a bit about that, because our special ed teachers have worked really hard throughout the whole experience of shifting to remote learning. But some of the things that we have been doing on a regular basis administratively is attending weekly Department of Ed meetings to kind of get updates and guidance as we're moving through the remote learning process. We also have been meeting routinely with our legal counsel to kind of make sure that we've got all the right things in place. And we've also, at the start, we developed a communication and services document. So our staff are documenting all of the work that they're doing with students, including consultations with parents and check-ins. including consultations with parents and check-ins and any kind of, any type of communication that's supporting the student through the learning process. Again, we have weekly department staff meetings at the district level and also at the skilled, school-based level and within programs as well. We focused on elements of remote learning, social, emotional learning support, looking at parent resources and communications, looking at additional websites that might be good resources for students. And we've also, in March, we required our special education staff to complete progress reports. So we ended our quarter and trimesters with the closure on March 13th, and they worked on progress reports to kind of document how students were progressing in their goals up till the time of that initial school closure. In April, we started working on team meetings. So our requirements for ID, under IDEA, haven't been waived or stopped, so we had to get back on track with team meetings. So our annual team meetings. And then we've been working individually on initial and triennial meetings in terms of determining if we can, we have enough information for eligibility and scheduling of those meetings. Ongoing communication with parents has continued in terms of meeting process, evaluation process, and the learning experiences. And then, again, throughout April, meetings with staff continue to develop the individual remote learning plans. Now we're in May and June, and we still continue with ongoing weekly meetings. If there isn't any new information, I utilize them as office hours so staff can pop in and we can talk through any kind of challenges or questions or processes that need to happen. We continue with the team meeting planning and scheduling. I need to thank our school psychologists who have jumped in to help facilitate team meetings so we can move through them as best we can. Staff, along with their teaching and attending team meetings, are also continuing to work on IEP development as part of their role. And now we're in the progress report writing phase for the end of the school year. And we have also been meeting to plan for extended school year. Look at our students and start thinking about the individual remote learning plans for, for extended school year.
I don't know what happened. My screen share just kicked out.
There we go. Some of the student successes. But I'll wait till it's up there. Some positives that came out of this for some students. We had students who were challenged with participation within the brick-and-mortar setting who have really shined in the remote learning environment and have really worked hard to complete and meet their requirements to get through the end of the school year. Some of the things that, that we found and the reasons for this, and this is mentioned earlier, but being able to learn on their own time has been beneficial for some of our students. The flexibility in learning when and how has been positive. And it's also, within the remote learning environment, alleviated some of the anxiety that comes with being in the school environment. So we have found that this, this kind of remote learning realm has worked for our students. Not that it has worked for everybody, but we have some positive results for some of our students. Staff have found that there's more meaningful and timely communications with parents through this remote environment. Staff are consulting with parents more. They're doing it either by phone or through email, through Zoom. And in some cases, staff are texting with parents who have access difficulties. We found that students are participating more in project-based and interest-based experiences, including building and creating on their own time in areas that they, again, they're interested in. We've also found that students are participating more in activities of daily life living. So we have an example of a student who is working with, within a family business with building homes. So students are working, they're engaged in employment if they're old enough. We have students who are engaging more in cooking. Again, creating, creating games on their own and creating different buildable projects. And students have talked about gardening that they've been involved in. As mentioned earlier by Dr. Lazaro, the self-care activities. We've had students reporting that they're spending more time taking care of themselves through exercise, yoga, or meditation. So those are the, some successes with our students that are happening. Areas for continued focus. So some of the things we have seen that we need to continue to think about and really work on as we're moving forward and go into re-entry plans for next year is our, we need to improve our engagement and access for students, particularly our students with severe learning disabilities or communication impairments, or those students with the social, emotional, and behavioral challenges. It's more, it's more difficult to engage in them consistently in the remote learning environment and meet all of their needs. So we need to kind of find better ways or more ways to kind of support them and their families. Planning and collaboration between general education and special education staff and between special education teams. We still need to do more around that. And we need to look to see what type of platform we can create within the remote learning environment to increase the opportunities for staff to collaborate, but also share ideas and information more readily so people aren't reinventing the wheel. Again, the collaboration and sharing is more natural in the brick-and-mortar setting than it is in this remote learning environment. And as a department, we need to look at how we can better refine how we are effectively addressing multiple goal areas within the remote learning environment. It's challenging to meet all of the goals in this type of environment because they are written for in school and a lot of it is dependent on more close interactions between staff and students. And then the other piece is managing the volume of team meetings in a remote learning environment. We're trying really hard to not impede on the learning times or the staff teaching times to schedule team meetings, knowing that, you know, the challenge to shifting to a remote learning environment and the decreased amount of time in teaching and directly working with students has been impacted. So we're not trying to impact that anymore. And then we're also working to, we need to better refine how we're going to address the evaluations. We have not been able to be in person, so we have not been able to complete all the initial and triangles we need to. So we need to figure out a plan for when we're able to get into a face-to-face situation, how we start to work on, on those components. I just, I know this has been recognized and spoken about, but I do need to and want to reiterate, as mentioned at the start of the presentation, that our teachers have worked really hard and have spent countless hours in the shift to the remote learning environment. And for many of them, they've also had to take care of their own children and families at the same time. And our student services staff in particular, across the district, have done an amazing job working to meet the needs of our students to the best of their abilities in this environment. And I also want to say, our English language tutors have also worked really hard to, they're part of the student services team, and they have worked to engage the families, provide materials, provide synchronous learning, support the classroom teachers and the students within the classroom. And I just need to thank them all because I think they've worked really hard and they are spending countless hours with the focus of supporting all of our students. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you all so very much for taking the time to create a window into the remote learning world. I know even as the superintendent, although I get to meet with all of you and hear stories and anecdotes throughout each week, I really am missing the, the in-person components of what public education is all about. And so thank you very much for your, your time in putting the presentation together. I do just want to say that we continue, we plan to continue to collect feedback from the community that has really helped us make decisions about what our next moves will be, how we can enhance and improve what we're doing. And there will be a parent survey coming out in the next couple of weeks. We're actually reviewing the questions tomorrow at our leadership team meeting. So you can be looking forward to that. And we'll, we'll hope for a big response as we have had on each of the surveys that we've done so far. But with that, I just want to thank the leadership team. You were all so gracious in acknowledging how hard your staff have been working, how hard the students have been working, and how hard the parents have been working. And I know that for you two, you have been balancing it all and doing your job to work from home and stay connected with everybody. So thank you for all of your, your hard work during this crisis and helping it be a smooth, successful experience for, for most of our families and students. And then we're happy to answer any questions that the school committee might have about where we, where we've been, where we are, and where we're going.
I just wanted to, you know, thank everyone for really taking your time and not listening directions and only staying to five minutes each. Because I really think that this is the most important meeting we've ended up having in quite some time. You know, we've been so bogged down with, you know, the finances of the district that we were sort of losing sight as, maybe on the committee level or, you know, of really what's going in day in and day out. You know, as we're trying to sort out, you know, what our budget's going to look like or what the classroom is going to look like next year, that you guys don't have that luxury to stop and think about it. And, you know, you're, you're making changes on the fly. And, you know, you did a great job of really explaining everything that you've done along the way and sort of how, you know, you've used your experience to make the best, you know, to continue to, you know, look at yourself and make sure that you're doing the best for our students in these crazy times. So, you know, I really can't say enough great things about you. And this is really, really refreshing to hear. I know my phone has been blowing up about people just really appreciating what you guys had to say. So, you know, thank you all for everything that you do. And then, you know, thanks again for taking the time tonight really explaining it to us at that level. I don't have any questions for you personally, but I'm sure someone else on the committee might have something else that they'd like to hear.
I just want to jump in and say thank you. Just following up on what David said. It's, I think it's important for people that are listening and that don't have children in the district to understand what the staff of the district has been doing and the toll that it's taken on them physically and mentally. We all carry the success, emotional and educational children, of their education, the children's education with us. And I know the teachers are carrying this burden doubly. So I just think it's important for our community members to see what our staff is doing. So thank you.
I have a couple of questions. On the middle school, did you survey the students? Or how did you come up with the conclusions that you had?
So we did do a survey for students, and, which we didn't include a lot of the data in this presentation, but we have also reached out to staff for some initial feedback. We're in the thick of it still, so reflection is not something we've had the luxury of doing a lot of yet. So we'll be reaching out to our staff as well throughout the summer to get their input and feedback. And as Julie mentioned, we're going to be working on a district-wide parent survey.
And then the, the feedback that I've heard from the community is also mostly just around gym. That gym has turned from physical education to written assignments and written reflections and not really P E anymore. So I'm hoping that we can evaluate what disciplines translate well to digital learning and which ones don't, and think about how we can deal with that. And then my, the last question I had is, I think that I heard that finals have been canceled for high schoolers. So I'm curious, is what we're going to do to replace those traditional assessment days with learning days?
Michelle, I can answer that. The staff has really been working, as they've grown through this model, a number of them have been working more towards some project-based things. So some of the, the teachers are looking at longer-term projects, although not month-long, but week-long projects or making kind of final assessments and judgments about something that they may be working on over the last week or so. And then usually the last day to day and a half is, is set aside so that kids can make up any work, get it all taken care of, check in with their teachers, make sure they have everything in. And then the last day, teachers will have to post their grades and things like that.
So students, even after they have that pickup day, they will still be getting assignments and be expected to do work?
Yes. Yes, they will. That's even noted in the letter that I sent to parents yesterday.
So are, is there going to be a time that we're going to talk about Saturday? Or is this kind of it?
About Saturday?
Eric, could you speak a little bit to the logistics for the parade on Saturday, please?
Sure. So Saturday at 11, 11 o'clock, we were having a celebrative, celebration parade for our seniors. We have invited seniors to join a car parade, to decorate their cars, to wear their caps and gowns. We've asked parents to drive so students can focus on some of the things that they'll see along their route. The route will go from the high school, out of the high school parking lot, down 1A towards the Hamilton Police and Fire Complex. Pass there, straight down to the Wenham Police and Fire Complex and end in that three-way turnoff there, so there's enough places for people to go. We have posted and offered our teachers to be posted along the roadways in various locations, socially distanced, of course. And I know our families are very much looking forward to also celebrating the kids as, as they, you know, Saturday is, would have been their graduation day. So for them, it's a celebration. And then we have, we have some people who will hold signs and, you know, the different balloons and things like that just to celebrate the kids on the day that they would have graduated if this were a normal school year.
And so is that in lieu of a graduation ceremony or?
It is not. It is not. The graduation ceremony, as I mentioned earlier in a memo, I think May 20th School Committee meeting, the, the graduation ceremony will be based on the state guidance of nothing happening in person before July 19th. The students and the student officers and their advisors, and I picked out the date of Saturday, the 25th, which is really the first Saturday we could do it at 10:00 a.m. on the field. The state does not allow tents, but we will do a socially-distanced ceremony with limited attendance so that students can receive their diplomas. And again, if you go back to some of the surveying we did earlier in, in the month of May, we were at 98% of our staff, excuse me, our parents and our teachers really wanted to delay the ceremony because they wanted to have something in person. So the latest guidance from the state has given us that window, and we're, we're going to try and pull that off on, on July 25th at 10:00 a.m. on our football field.
And are they going to get their diplomas that day? Are those coming in the mail?
They will get their diplomas on that day.
Thank you, Eric. Are there any other end-of-year celebrations that the principals would like to highlight?
I can speak a little for the middle school. In lieu of our traditional eighth-grade filing-out ceremony, we're putting together a virtual video production. So we have some speeches being assembled. We have some music being created by our chorus department. We're going to have, we have got some video montages we're putting in there, and that will all be shared with families on the last day of school. Today, we had some parent volunteers, teachers, and students go out and put lawn signs out for all our graduating, or filing up eighth graders. And, you know, yearbooks are delayed, to the best of my knowledge right now, due to some production issues. So we're going to work on some distribution of that probably towards the end of June. So I'm going to figure out the logistics on that piece once I know when they're coming in.
Thank you, Principal Hovey. Elementary, did you want to share some of your fun activities?
Sure. On our last day of school, June 16th, we're inviting families to drive through our driveways and have kind of a reverse parade where staff will be socially-distanced, spaced six feet apart on either side of our driveways to just... socially-distanced, spaced six feet apart um on either side of our driveways to just wave at the families and the children as a final hurrah for the year and give a little bit of closure and a little bit of FaceTime. And um classroom teachers will be doing end-of-year activities on Monday during their classroom meetings. Um, we have some drop everything and move if you've been in Hamilton Wenham for probably the last 15, 20 years. Dean is a big elementary activity that we often do on the last day of school. So our PE teachers are coordinating those activities on Monday as well.
We have um the the Friends of Winthrop and Cutler and Bueker got together and did the lawn signs for fifth graders as well, um similar to the other levels. Um, and at each individual schools, there are various sort of digital versions of some of our end-of-year activities that are happening as well, unique to the buildings.
All right. Any other questions from the school committee of our leadership team?
So we know, like I know, when pickup is of items from the high school, because I'm a high school parent, when are the pickup for items at the middle school?
That's, we have a letter that's going out tomorrow, but we are scheduling the pickups for next Thursday and Friday.
What, what are those dates?
The, I believe they're the 11th and 12th.
Those seem to be the same dates as the high school. Is that gonna cause congestion or?
It shouldn't. We're, we've got about 30 to 40 uh cars an hour coming down through the middle school uh entrance, in the middle school entrance, in front of the middle school and back out. So it shouldn't cause too much traffic and certainly no more than at the end of a typical school day.
And if students don't come during that time because it's not convenient to come during the time, how do they get their items?
If for the, I can only speak for the middle school, but if they're able to come in at another time, then that's okay. We prefer people come during the assigned time to avoid um overloading. And we'll probably have a pickup of materials later in the summer as well, because we're undoubtedly gonna come across things as we clean out the building.
The same will happen at the high school because we have a few kids that have to go to college to get their belongings. So the families are taking them to the college on, I think, Friday, the 12th. So we'll work it out with families. We we have uh set aside some days, but we're gonna try and get the majority of them done next Thursday and Friday.
Mr. Gary, would you like to speak your comments so that the community can hear?
Yeah, I'd love to. Um, publicly thank the um the custodial staff for packing up and labeling all of the belongings, not only in the high school, middle school, but also the elementary school. So they've played a very important role in that. So I'd publicly thank them.
And of course, our continued partnership with Accord Food Pantry and our um food service director, Catherine Donovan. She was, she had slides prepared, but then she said, oh, maybe the focus should be just on instruction. But we we definitely plan to celebrate that before the end of the year because that has been an amazing partnership and we are so grateful that through that partnership, we've been able to support so many families throughout the closure. So thank you Accord Food Pantry and Catherine Donovan.
Great. Well, thank you all again for um, you know, everything that you do and really just um catching us all up on how the, you know, spring has gone thus far. Um, you know, really, really appreciate it and you know, looking forward to how we adapt and grow from this. And I know that we have the team that's actually gonna that's gonna really find the silver linings um during these times. So thank you all for being here. So uh, you're free to go at this point.
Ben, make sure you log these Zoom hours.
Absolutely.
Automatic now.
So Julie, can you be sure this presentation gets linked to our agenda so the public has access to it?
Yes, ma'am.
Right. Um, up next, we want to honor retirees and our student representative. Excuse me. Um, this year, we actually only have two people retiring from the district. Uh, do you wanna take that on, Julie?
So I will. Um, I think, you know, this is kind of signs of the times. We um, we, of course, have purchased gifts for each of our retirees to commemorate their service and commitment to the district. We wanted them to join us so that we could publicly thank them, but they're being very humble and um just didn't want to be in the spotlight or in recognition. And for Gretchen, she's really just focusing on her students. And um, sure, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but I can only imagine that this is not how she planned it, planned retirement to look. Um, and I think the much the same is, much is the same for Dolly, but we just want to thank them for their commitment and they will be getting a little surprise in the mail from the district just to thank them for their service. And then I also wanted to take a chance to recognize and honor Thomas Kane, our student representative. I'm not sure if he's on tonight or um still on. Uh, but we uh have purchased a gift for him as well. I don't want to say what it is because I don't want to spoil the surprise, but we will be sending that his way in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, I I just want to take a minute and um thank Tom for the incredible year uh we've had with him. I am very disappointed that it got cut short. Um, you know, this is my fourth year on the school committee, excuse me, and it's always really interesting to see really, really get to engage with our student representatives. And, you know, Tom, on many occasions, really added some great insight um to our conversation from a student perspective and really did a good job of sort of correcting some fallacies that were going around during our conversations. And in his input was really quite invaluable throughout the year. Um, you know, I know um your next step, I believe, is Dartmouth?
Harvard.
Harvard. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, well, I know that you will, you know, continue on to great success. You know, there and everywhere else you go in the future. Um, I wish that I, like I said, I wish we got to sort of work together a little bit more this year, but um, you know, I'm very excited to hear about um all the successes you have in life. And thank you for your service to our community, to your class and uh to our district. So thanks, Tom.
When you're president, make me Secretary of Squirrels.
So Tom is over in the um attendees. He's here under his, under his other name, John, um, if he wants to talk. And then we also had a comment just thanking uh Mrs. Hearn and Ms. McElany and I, Ma- McElveiny. And I just wanted to say the same, like I know both of those individuals. My children didn't even go to Cutler, but I've had inter- my children have had interactions with them, both personally and professionally. And I um, they've been a great asset to our district, so. Now Tom's on mute if he wants to talk.
Right.
I just wanted to say the same, everyone. Thank you so much for a great year. It was really an honor to be on the school committee and just kinda I was glad to offer insight when it helped. And thank you guys for being so good to me and patient with me at certain times. Thanks so much, guys.
Luck in the future, John.
Good luck in everything you do, buddy.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're the best.
You really are.
We'll be waving at you on Saturday. Just look for us.
Yeah, sounds good. Sounds good.
And we'll be voting for you when you run for president.
Thanks, Mr. Ozek.
All right. Um, up next, so that was so, yeah, we we've just got so much more to go through. Um, Craig Daniel is here to um do, he did a Title IX self-a- self-audit for athletics within our district, which I think is fantastic. I can't say enough. And it's something that's here. How amazing this meeting actually is, all the stuff that's sort of going on here between um, you know, the, the teachers presenting and the the leadership staff presenting everything that's been going on within our schools. You know, just getting a chance to honor these retirees and and just, you know, the fact that we are, you know, um taking part in Title IX self-audits, you know, for being proactive and actually making sure that, you know, our district is doing the right thing is is pretty, pretty exciting, you know, in in right now, I think it's sort of getting tied up and confused with um, you know, where our budget is and from a town perspective. And, you know, it's it's so refreshing, um, you know, for me anyway, and invigorating to just see all this great work that you guys are doing. So Craig, I'll turn it over to you uh to speak to um your audit.
Great. Thank you, Dave. Um, and I'm incredibly grateful for the opportunity to chat. Um, this is something that the athletic department, Trish Field and I worked on throughout the month of April. Um, and we dove pretty deep. Uh, the the complete report that we came up with is linked into the agenda and you can see it there. It's, you know, 30 something pages. It probably could have been 60. In order to not, well, and, you know, the important thing about that document is that it's not meant to be the final word on anything, right? It's just like the topic itself. It's a living, breathing document. It's a living, breathing topic that is, it's not like you do a bunch of stuff and then it's done. It's always something that has to be at the forefront of your thoughts. Um, and our goal was to hold up a mirror as to what was happening. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't, the task wasn't taken on from a defensive standpoint. It wasn't taken on from, you know, trying to prove anything. It was just literally trying to hold a mirror up to what we were doing and be very honest about where we needed to make some improvements and be very honest about frankly, what I thought we were doing well. Because nobody wants, thank you, Julie, because nobody wants to look at a 38-page document, um, we did come up with, you know, five or six slides here. And Julie's gonna show that now. So like, you know, so once again, so just like, thank you for the opportunity to be able to present this. It was a lot of work, but it was worth it. It was well, well worth it. Um, Julie, if you go to the next one, we can kick it right off. So the key components in Title IX compliance is really in three areas. Uh, one is sport offerings. One is substantial proportionality. Substantial proportionality, which we'll go into what that means and how that's defined in a moment. And then really full and effective accommodations, which there are 11 of. Some of those are included, but not limited to things like equipment budgets and uniforms, locker room access, quality of coaches, games and schedules, facility and medical availability, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, and we'll get into those. So the first thing is the sport offerings. Um, you know, because we care about this stuff, we're very balanced, right? We're, we're single-sex varsity sports, where it's, you know, only offered to boys. Like we have boys soccer and girls soccer. Uh, we have, you know, baseball and softball. We have boys basketball and girls basketball. Those are considered single-sex because girls can't play on boys' teams and boys can't play on girls' teams. So they're dead even at 11-11. Coed primarily female, there's four sports there include volleyball, field hockey, um cheer and um that, thank you, yes. And so those are primarily female. Males can play on those, uh, but they're, you know, they're coed technically when you do the state informational sheet at the end of every year, but they're primarily female. Primarily male would include things like football and or, you know, sports like that. So golf, golf is a boy's sport, but girls in our, girls haven't played at Hamilton Wenham, but they certainly have in our league and and all that. Our position on sub-varsity teams, meaning JV teams and what was formerly called freshman teams and is now called JV2, our whole approach has always been wherever there's enough participation, we're gonna have a team. So for example, we haven't had JV2, which is formerly known as freshman girls' basketball for a while. We had enough girl participants this year. We immediately had girls' for, girls' JV2 basketball. And so that's always been our approach to that. Um, I'm aware that there's one additional boys' sub-varsity team than girls' sub-varsity team. Um, and we're aware of that. And like I said, this isn't, this document is meant, was meant, and the findings were meant to hold up a mirror to what we're doing. Uh, Julie, if you could go to the next slide. So substantial proportionality is um divided into two categories. It's divided into unduplicated student athletes and duplicated student athletes. And all that simply means is unduplicated means how many student athletes participated in at least one sport at any level during the year. Duplicated athletes refers to how many team member slots are there of all the either uh primarily girls or almost all girls, like based on what we said about single-sex versus primarily. But how how many team members are in those sports? And what they do is they want to um compare. So at Hamilton Wenham, for example, that I actually, these numbers are on page four of the report exactly. I'm looking at the screen share, so I don't want to misquote, but you know, if 52% of our student body is made up of female students, we need to make sure that approximately 52% of our females make up both our unduplicated student athletes and our duplicated student athletes. In the unduplicated category, you know, you see there, so we did research over the last three years, and this research is spelled out in the report. I'm not gonna bore you to tears with it. We're 0.4, 0.5 and 2.6 away in the unduplicated category. The duplicated category is 3.2, 1.8, 2.9. The Office of Civil Rights, which is the group that investigates these things or looks into these situations, if there are any to be looked at, says between 3% and 5% is a safe zone. That's according to the, to the NIAAA, which is the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. The, between 3% and 5% is the safe zone. I, then the 19, 20 numbers seem to be a little skewed because I, we couldn't count spring sports. They only count fall and winter. So, you know, I don't know if that's an anomaly or not. Um, I suspect it is. But uh, so, you know, I look at that as that we're within the, we're within the the reasonable realm of proportionality. The final slide, and again, there's tons, and so this speaks to kind of that third category from the first one, which says equitable access and all that. There were four things that we found that we could look at uh in areas for improvement. I'll be brutally honest with you. Not all of them are gonna be popular with with our families. But, you know, again, not looking to, just looking to hold up a mirror to what we're doing. And these areas would include, I think we need to add a girls' lacrosse coach. Back when the 100% user fee happened in the mid 2000s, it was determined that girls' lacrosse would not have a varsity assistant coach. Why does boys have a varsity assistant coach? Well, boys varsity lacrosse is a full-contact sport. And so the thought process, I can only guess it was before my time, was that you needed an extra adult in case of an injury. At that time, the district was paying no money and the parents were paying the full fee. So that's my guess as to why it happened. I think now, even if, you know, depending on if the, if the, you know, what the user fee is, I don't think it matters what the user fee is. I think we need to add a girls' assistant lacrosse coach. Over the last several years, I've advocated for every varsity sport having an assistant coach, which most don't. For the first time this year, I'm happy to say that through the leadership team's meetings, that topic receives significant, I'd call it airtime. It didn't ultimately get passed because of the other needs of the district. It didn't ultimately make its way to you as the school committee. We highlighted that when we presented the school budget to you about what we didn't share. Um, but I think at a bare minimum, I think we need the girls' lacrosse assistant varsity coach to be added. I think our user fees need to be combined by sport. Um, logistically, it's fairly easy to do. There's a whole set of scenarios in the report about how this plays out. But for example, the boys' soccer fee and the girls' soccer fee, in my opinion, should be the same. One shouldn't be higher than the other. Um, the last couple of years, the, you know, with the, with the much larger contribution by the school committee, these discrepancies by by like, I'll call them like sports, have been smaller. But, you know, if we go to a larger user, uh, family-paid user fee percentage, the discrepancies are gonna get wider. And I, you know, I think boys' soccer and girls' soccer needs to be the same. I think boys' basketball and girls' basketball needs to be the same. There's examples in there there of what happened this year. Sometimes the boys' fee is higher, sometimes the girls' fee is higher. It just depends on the number of users. It's explained in there how these could be combined very practically using the same basic system that we do now. Ticket revenue um is relevant because 2/3 of gate money collected goes back into that sport. And what it ultimately does is reduce the user fee at the beginning of the year. The only sports we collect, we collect tickets for are foot- The only sports we collect, we collect tickets for are football and then both basketballs. Why don't we collect tickets for soccer? Why don't we collect tickets for volleyball? Why don't we collect tickets for lacrosse? That's all spelled out in the report. Mostly on page eleven there, ten and eleven. But the ultimate reason is I don't believe you can collect ticket revenue unless you can secure the facility. If you're collecting ticket money for soccer and the football team's in the back or there's a JV soccer game in the back, are you going to charge for JV soccer? Are you going to cha, you know, you, you can't secure the facility. Same with volleyball. There's too many people coming in and out of the gym in the afternoon as opposed to basketball, which is standalone at night or football standalone on Saturday. So we collect for those sports. I think right now, boys basketball has a lot higher attendance than girls basketball. And, you know, as a result, the boys basketball team's user fee is reduced by a greater amount than the girls basketball team is. If you combine the ticket revenue, and I don't think you can combine ticket revenue without combining the user fees, by the way, but if you did them together, that would seem to make sense and it would be equitable. Finally, the combined booster groups by sport, I think is, you know, I think all this stuff has to be done at once. You know, frankly, this would be the most controversial thing if we passed it. Title IX says the money invested into sports, whether it's by a district or by boosters, you know, that's what's relevant. It's not just district money that Title IX looks at. Title IX looks at, you know, if the, if the, if a one of the genders bask, if one of the genders boosters contributes a much larger amount than the other genders boosters, that's a problem. So, you know, we would have to get together on that. And frankly, some groups are motivated a lot more than other groups to raise money. And so there might be some kind of dissension about, well, you don't do anything. Why should you benefit from what we're doing? Again, all this was started with a hundred percent user fee. We're still feeling the effect of that fifteen, sixteen years later. And we're still paying the price for that. And I think that's relevant because when this started and it was a hundred percent user fee, it was every group for themselves. It was every team for themselves. Nobody cared about what anyone else was doing. But I think now we're at the point where, you know, it would need to be managed. It would need to be understood. But I think if we're going to comply with, you know, like right now, we're in Title IX compliance, in my opinion. We really are. But that, that's not to say going back to this is a living, breathing document. We can't be better. And I think, you know, doing things like combining the booster groups, do we absolutely have to do it? I don't know. But I'd rather do it not because someone, we might be afraid that someone might come in and say that we have to someday. I'd rather do it because even though it's hard, I think it's the right thing. And finally, it goes without saying, and I'm not going to, you know, our fields are deplorable. They're a joke. They're the worst in our league. It's an absolute embarrassment on every level. Still, our coaches do an amazing job. It was announced today at our league AD meeting. We won the Highland Award for the second year in a row for athletic excellence in the Cape Town League based on winning percentage, sportsmanship, participation in education, being good in school. Based on those four factors, we got the league's highest honor for the second year in a row despite having just gross field conditions. So these field conditions, not only are gross, they lead to huge inequities. I'll give you one example and then I'll leave this alone, but there's a million examples like this. You take where our soccer teams practice. Our girls soccer team practices on a field that is not regulation width, okay? But it's the best grass on the entire campus. The boys sub, the, the boys practice on a field that is regulation width, but is among the worst grass on campus. This past year, we had a huge issue on half of the boys field. You had close to forty boys practicing on half a soccer field. So yeah, they had the best width. And the girls weren't practicing on the field that was the best with, but really both fields were disgusting. And, you know, the turf field project eliminates the, the perception or the reality, or whatever you want to call it, that one team is getting disadvantaged rather than another team. The simple fact is every team is getting disadvantaged. And so that has to remain, you know, so that's, has to remain a reason why we keep that at our forefront. So that's that. Again, the, the, if you want to go to the next slide, Julie, the, the bottom line is this is not meant to be the final word on anything. I welcome your questions. I welcome your thoughts, comments and concerns now, but also in the future. I want people, I want folks to know that this is here. This is an opportunity to say, you know, hey, we, we missed this area or I understand what you did in this area, but can we dig deeper? What do you mean by this? I want to be an open book with everything I do, not just this, but certainly I want this to be an open discussion.
So, you know, thanks a lot for doing this, Craig. Um, there's obviously a lot to unpack here. That, that recap is, is pretty good. And I just want to, I don't know, congratulate you and for all the work you've done to actually win the, um, Highland Award again for a second year. That, that's really impressive and just shows just how important our athletic program is here at Hamilton Wenham. Excuse me. I don't know, Julie, I just saw that you were going to say something. I don't know if anyone else had any questions at this time. It's a lot, like I said, a lot going on and I did not look at this before our meeting today. So I apologize for that.
Just thank you, Craig. I, I did have a chance to look at this document this morning and it's really involved. I think it's important to look at the equity issues. And I think it shows that we're on par, which is great, that, that we are fair to both the boys and the girls teams. I would be interested to see what the boosters take on combining. Being under one umbrella would be because, as you know, some boosters don't give to user fees and some fairly across the board as other, not fairly, but it's up to the boosters. It's their money. They can do what they want. Some boosters really give to team gifts. As a cross-country booster parent, we gave nothing to the kids, you know, when they won their, girls won their state cross-country championship two years in a row. Private parents funded, you know, it didn't come out of boosters because we wanted to do for user fees. So it, it's just going to be interesting to bring the groups together to see as a group where they want their funds to go to. So that's, I think it's going to be a sticky issue. Yeah, that's something for another day. So.
So I don't understand the user fee combining. Why is that an issue? Is that because we need a policy? What's the reason we can't do that? Or why is the reason why we don't do that?
So I can, so a lot of this is from our predecessors, right? The, the school committees from fifteen years ago, the athletic directors from a long time ago. Back when the, the school committee decided that athletics, and like again, this, I think this is the mid-two thousands at some point. That every sport, this is the mid-two thousands, that every sport was going to take the total cost to run that sport, divided by the number of users, there's your hundred percent user fee. So, you know, sports that had a high cost like football and hockey were high, sports that had low participants like golf or gymnastics were high. Where sports like cross-country, which were not expensive to run and had a large number of participants or track and field, were very, very low. So that, so that was the reason that it was initiated. I've brought it up kind of anecdotally over the last several years during the budget process. And, you know, it was thought of as a good idea, but just never happened to combine like sports. You know, if, like this year, in the document, you'll see it's not a huge discrepancy between this, between the, the like sports, boys and girls basketball, boys and girls soccer, baseball and softball. It's not a huge difference because the district was contributing so much. But as that number goes up, the, the the gap widens considerably. And so, you know, there's always questions, you know, why was, why is girls basketball four seventy and boys basketball three ten? Or why is girls soccer, you know, two ninety and boys soccer four twenty? And then you go into explaining that the process is the same and girls have more participants than boys in some cases. Boys have more than girls in some cases. But it just, it doesn't feel right to have two soccer things be different or two basketballs or baseball and softball or whatever. It just doesn't feel right.
So my question is, where is the policy that says that's how you're supposed to calculate the user fees?
So that's the way I was always told to do it. I've, I'm, I'm looking, if there's not a policy and we don't, you know, whether we need to vote or not, that's not, I have no idea. But that's also not something I'd be comfortable changing on my own without, you know, kind of a
Yeah. It's a highly, having experienced it in another district, it's a highly controversial topic for the reasons Michelle Horgan outlined and others, you know, some booster groups are really robust in their fundraising and some are not as robust. And so when, and I agree that you kind of, if you do that hand in hand with the, the user fee, you can make a better, a greater justification for it, but it is a, a very challenging process, I will say.
Okay. So I, so you're saying because the booster, because the girls boosters might give less money than the boys boosters, we shouldn't do the right thing?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying
No, that's
I think what Craig and I are both saying is it's a process. And if that's something that the school committee is ready to take on, we would support that. But we should be really strategic and thoughtful about how we do that.
That's, I, I guess I don't understand because the school committee has never set, doesn't have a policy. The school committee doesn't get the opportunity to have any insight into the fees being charged. And honestly, sometime we've asked how they're calculated and it's like it's a mystery. So, yeah, I think we should look at that. Because the school committee is not condoning the way it is now because there is no policy that says that's the way it should be set unless somebody can point us to that.
Well, the school committee is also not, not saying that it's wrong the way we're doing it. I think everyone here is agreeing that there's room for improvement here and we should look into it.
Right. I think we're all saying the same thing.
Does the school committee have the authority to set the fees?
Absolutely. You, you do inadvertently through the budget process. So it's not a mystery how the fees are calculated. Craig could show you the spreadsheet that shows you exactly how it's calculated. And through the budget process by way of approving the user fee, which you do, the percentage, which you do, and then the ultimate, ultimately the budget, that's how we come up with the annual user fees. And then it's just divided by the number of participants in each sport.
If, if we looked into it, creating a policy for it, we'd actually be better off in the long run to sort of be able to regulate these fees as opposed to like having them change at the discretion of, you know, any particular school committee and how they want to fund our budget. You know, so I actually think that it's just a, a great long-term or, you know, goal to have to actually just try and regulate these and then keep things consistent, you know, so it's not changing every year and a half.
Well, or just charge the same fee to participate. So it's an activity fee.
Yeah, that just means the district has to be able to support the balance of the cost of the programming.
Right. Or, you know, it may be cheaper to run cross-country than it is to play football, but everybody pay the same fee. You know. So how does this get moved from a conversation to action?
I think, so for what it's worth for me, and, and I'm, and maybe I'm not, maybe I should just shut up and I'm apologizing if I'm not supposed to be talking, but, you know, I think I, I, I think probably for twenty twenty-one, I think we're probably locked in because we have a, well, we have a budget request and that's going through its processes and different things. I think as, my opinion only would be that as we enter the budget cycle next year, you know, we, we really look at how how we set user fees. And, you know, I've always, anyone that wants to come see a spreadsheet, I don't own it. You know, I'm, I may work on it, but I don't own it. I'm happy to show anyone anything anytime. And, you know, these are my suggestions and my thoughts. You know, from a Title IX perspective, it's not, it's not meant to be the final word.
No, I think that, that's fantastic, but I, I, let, let's sort of put this on our radar for, to talk about in the fall. I think we want to actually get this sort of before we get into the budget process because I think there's some work that we can do here. You know, from a policy standpoint, you know, and then, you know, working with you. You know, we can really try and, it's like I said, solidify some, some language around how to make this the most equitable that we can moving forward. So, you know, they, thank you for really starting the conversation and, and, you know, like I said, ta, taking a look in the mirror and doing this work proactively, right? That, that's how, that's how we sort of discover these areas for improvement, you know, within ourselves. And, and it's great to sort of, you know, to figure it out ourselves rather than have someone else, else point it out to us in a, in a negative, you know, negative fashion.
So if I could make a recommendation, just given all of the uncertainty, uncertainty that we have, perhaps it would be good for Craig to flesh out maybe a plan because I do think you should have a a committee, some sort of committee involved in the process that includes a variety of stakeholders, school committee members. Craig, you could look to other districts that have done something similar and kind of assess best practices. And maybe in the fall, you can present a process and then the school committee can weigh with all of the other priorities that you have. Where does this fall in terms of urgency? Because there's going to be a lot to manage and negotiate next year, just given our situation.
I know that sounds good from right, any other questions on this title line audit? All right. So up next, Craig, you have a opportunity for the boys basketball team that you'd like to present?
Yeah. So I do. There is an annual, there's an annual boys, uh, excuse me, there's an annual boys and girls basketball day run by the Andrew Lawson Foundation. And where a bunch of teams compete at the, at the Boston Garden or whatever it's called these days over the course of the day. Revere High School, who has been a part of our has been a part of our patent tournament over the April, uh, over the February break, the last several years, was invited to participate in this day, in this event, where teams have to sell tickets but they can play at the Boston Garden. Because our, so our coach, Mike Di Marino, who's four-time coach of the year, national renowned history teacher, national award-winning history teacher is on this call. If we need to bring him in, we can. Is very good friends with the Revere High School coach. They played together. They grew up together. You know, they play in our tournament. We have a great relationship. We were going to play them next year in a non-league game anyway. Revere High School got invited to this game and invited us to be their opponent. So this is essentially a non-league game. And instead of going to Revere High School, the game would be at the Boston Garden. There is a ticket selling component to this that our boosters have agreed to take on. But, you know, again, especially given the topic that we just discussed, this isn't a Title IX violation, but it's an, it's an, it's a sticky wicket when it comes to optics. I immediately, upon getting this invitation, and this is in the letter, I think it was on a Thursday, by Friday afternoon, I was talking to the organizer of the event. The teams are set for this year. But he is, and I said, look, I, if our boys go, you know, what can we do for our girls? I want our girls to have the same opportunity and everything. And he was a great guy and he said, look, I can't promise you this year. And, you know, I can't even a hundred percent promise you in the future, but you call me and let me know and we'll do everything we can to get your girls team in. He, it was, it was a great, like twenty-minute conversation with the guy who's trying to, you know, you can read all about Andrew Lawson in the document and what he is all about and his story. And he's trying to create an experience and an environment for high school basketball in Massachusetts. I, I think on the one hand, I see, I see the issue of, well, our girls didn't get invited. Why do our boys get to go? Well, I understand that. And I'm, you know, given the sixty or seventy or eighty hours I just spent in the month of April, working on that document to present to you, I'm not indifferent to those things. I also think if we don't allow our boys if we don't, I wish I could wear my pajamas, Stacy. Uh, give me a second. I'll mute her. You know, this is to be a kid growing up in Massachusetts and be able to play at Fenway Park or Gillette Stadium or the Boston Garden, whether it's basketball or hockey, or if you're a soccer player playing with a revolution play. I think to not allow our boys to play would be, you know, I can only imagine being a high school athlete and knowing this is a chance and being like, I can't, what? You know, you have my word that I will beg, borrow, steal, whatever you need me to do to to help get our girls in in the coming years. You have my commitment on that. I know there's people on the call right now that have both sons or not on the call, just people in this meeting that have both a son and the girls in the boys program and a girl in the girls program. And, you know, I I'd be curious if the public comments section at the end, if they're still on the call. I don't know to see what they would say. You have my absolute word. I will kill myself to get the girls this opportunity in the future. I think it would be a terrible injustice to our team, to our boys team to not let them go uh, this year. And, you know, this probably doesn't need a school committee vote, to be honest. But I feel as though it's important enough that, you know, I I'd rather get your take and I'd rather present it to you. And, you know, hear discussion on it and see what you think before doing anything that would be a disservice to the district as a whole.
I mean, I I definitely think it's a once in a lifetime opportunity. You know, you you think back about, you know, as an old ex football player and you were too, Craig, back in the day, the opportunity to try to make it to states to get to play down at Gillette. You know, that 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 is something that means something. Um, I do see a comment in the from Sue Cook.
No, that was about.
That was from user fees.
Okay, all right. All right. So, um, excuse me. You know, I, my question was going to be, what do you need from us on this? You know, but I I love the fact that you're asking and you want to bring it up, you know, for the sense of optics. I mean, it's a shame. We don't even know what next winter is going to look like. We don't even know what basketball season is going to look like.
Yep.
You know, and maybe all the basketball games have to move here just to be able to socially distance properly. You know, and I mean, I just think it's a great opportunity, you know, and and I, and I can definitely respect the optics and sort of the turmoil you're feeling in in that it's an opportunity for one, but not the other. But at the same time, you know, we're being invited as a guest. And the only way to sort of be able to speak at the table is if you're actually at the table. So the only way we, I I really feel that we could even potentially get the girls there is if we meet the people we need to, you know, that are that run the event.
Yep.
You know, but I I'm only one person, you know.
Yeah, Craig, I just want to say education is about giving our kids opportunities and this is a opportunity of a lifetime. So it's unfortunate that the girls aren't invited, but that doesn't mean that the boys should not go. Um, and as you're saying, you're working towards getting the girls an invitation and that's, that's great. So again, from a booster standpoint, it, I I I'm hoping they sell four hundred tickets so the boosters aren't hit with the additional thousands of dollars, but that's, that's my only comment.
So do you guys want to make a motion and actually vote to support this?
Yeah, I mean, I don't hear anyone. Well, let's make a motion and then I guess we can have discussion what's the motions made.
Yeah, let me just open up the. All right, I make a motion that the Hamilton Wyndham School Committee approves the boys nineteen or twenty 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 one boys basketball team to participate in the Andrew James Lawson Foundation Invitational this coming winter at the Boston Garden.
Second.
Thank you. All right. Ty Prima, I'm sorry. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, so I just want to be clear that the school district is not responsible for any of the seven thousand two hundred dollar cost to participate.
Correct.
And uh, but even though we're not paying, this is still a school sanctioned event and the busing and all of those rules will still apply.
Yeah, so the team would be bu- so this is a, so this is a game, this is a non-league away game. And instead of going to Revere High School, we're going to the Boston Garden. So fans are kind of on their own. Same way they were a few years ago in the state tournament, uh, five years ago, but the team would be bussed in and the whole nine yards.
And um, I think there should be a discussion with the boys about like, this is an opportunity you're being given that the girls are not. And we're so happy for you because it's really kind of cool, but what are you going to do to reflect on your privilege?
I love that. Um, I love that idea. And, you know, I I I think, you know, one of the things that stinks about basketball is the way the schedule is set up, but when the girls are home, the boys are away. So there's very, very few times when they can go to each other's games and support one another. Michelle, I I appreciate your comment and what I, like, again, my coach is on the, is on this call. He's been on here since six o'clock, sitting here like dying with every minute like of this. And, um, you know, he's a great, he's, I mean, he's, he's an educator. He's a nationally, oh, he's a national award winning history teacher. I will make it a promise to you, Michelle, in front of everybody that, you know, say the girls have a game when the boys aren't playing, we will be there and we'll be, and they'll be loud and, you know, and all that. So I I appreciate that perspective. It's meaningful. Thank you.
I will say that, knock on wood, this coming team should be at the garden again in March of twenty twenty one, saying it out loud. No pressure, no pressure, boys.
Yeah. Okay.
Kelly vote.
Mike just died again on the call. So, thank you.
All right. So Peter Walchick.
Yes.
Michelle Bailey.
Yes.
Jean Lee.
Yes.
Michelle Horgan.
Yes.
Stacy Menderich.
Yeah.
Ty Prima.
Yes.
And David Plato's a yes. Good luck.
So much. Thank you so much.
Thank you for hanging in, Craig and Michael.
Of course, we're good. I'm gonna stay and watch the rest. You can kick me out of this room. I'm staying on anyway.
There, there's no sports on TV, so just call this the best game in town.
It always is. Seriously, thank you for letting me do everything. I'm gonna shut up now. I've taken way too much of your time. I'm so grateful. Thank you.
All right, um, after such a light, short meeting, now up next is, uh, you know, our budget reduction discussion. I I think just in, you know, keeping in mind that it's nine fifty three and, you know, a few of us have been on this, these meetings since three o'clock, you know, that we really want to try and keep our discussion on point here. I I know you know, that everyone that's still holding on is really wants to get the best update that we can give. Uh, you know, looking at our FY twenty one budget, excuse me, and it it's really, I know it's, it's not always easy to hear that this is, you know, forever changing and a very dynamic topic in in in, um, you know, we came out of executive session earlier, I feel with at least a timeline that we want to share out with everyone about what the next, you know, few weeks are going to look like um, from a budget perspective. Excuse me, um, I think we, if we haven't already, it will be shared as an amendment in these notes, that timeline, um, and that we will try to communicate it out the best that we can. So, you know, I just want to open the, open the floor for some discussion here. And like I said, really trying to keep it you know, as succinct and as on topic as possible, just given the time. I I know everyone's been putting in so much work lately that we're all exhausted. And, you know, and and everyone at home watching is probably exhausted as well. So with that being said, you know, I definitely want to open up, open up the floor um, to your public discuss, for us to have a discussion in public at this point.
Can Julie put the document up?
Which document would you like me to put up?
The one that we're talking about, the June, July district timeline.
Sure, I most certainly can.
Is it worth recapping a little bit of our uh, situation with regard to town meeting, just so that the audience knows what's going on?
Oh, they know. They're all the same.
That's what I was gonna suggest, maybe just like what's, what do we know at this point that, but I can show the screen here.
See, there's a lot of staff members in here. They they may not know the situation.
Yeah, I I don't know if I I honestly am the best person to sort of recap that. I mean, I can tell you what I think I know with regarding what's happening in Hamilton. So Hamilton will have their town meeting on June twentieth with the uh, election happening on June twenty fifth. At town meeting, I believe that there are still two warrant articles with regard to the school budget. A significant portion of that school budget will be part of the consent agenda. And then an additional amount would be in a second warrant article. And the capital request would be a yet another article by itself. In the election on the ballot will be a separate question regarding our capital requests. So.
Four votes in Hamilton.
Right, four votes, right. So three at town meeting, another one at at the election. Uh, and I believe that's, that nothing has changed since then with regard to that. So.
So then for Wyndham, so Hamilton, there's four places you need to vote yes. Wyndham on June twenty fifth also has the election. So you need to vote, if you want everything to pass, you need to vote yes on the third question on the back of your ballot. That's for the budget and you need to vote yes for the fourth question on the back of the ballot so that you um, can approve the sort of capital expenses. And then on July eleventh at some time yet to be determined, you have to go to town meeting and just like in Hamilton, you have to vote yes for um, the first part of our budget, yes for the, to complete the budget and yes for the capital expenses. So the community needs to vote nine times yes, in order for us to get all of the funding that we have requested to meet the needs of our district.
And Michelle, what will happen if any one of those votes fails?
So I'm not really sure what happens on the debt one. I think it just means the town has to figure out how to pay that within the levy limit. But uh, but I'm never, I've never been clear on that. But if any one of those town meeting votes or ballot votes does not get approved, then the whole budget doesn't get approved. So even though you might see in Hamilton or in Wyndham, there's some portion and then there's sort of like this, uh, what they're calling additional portion. In Hamilton, just because they picked a percentage that they thought was the right percent for the schools, and then there's this additional portion.
Right.
Just if you approve one of those, it's still, if you approve one instead of two, it's still a no vote on the budget. And in Wyndham, the same thing. If you vote yes on one part of the budget at town meeting, but you vote no on another part, it's still a no. And if the ballot doesn't pass, it's still a no. So there's a lot of places there, yes, votes are needed in order for the ballot to pass. Otherwise, it's a no on the whole thing. So we'd, we'd start over essentially. Which is time consuming and and also is, um, you know, it's not.
Not good.
Best place for us to be in the middle of a, a lot of uncertainty. And I think what you're gonna see tonight is we're presenting this decision making timeline is that we're hoping to wait for um, more information from the state because there's a lot of uncertainty about what education is going to look like in the fall or in the near future. So just want to, you know, so it's like nine votes, four in Hamilton, three of them happen at town meeting, one of them at the ballot. And one of them, it's five votes, two are on a ballot and three are at town meeting. So all of those things need to pass if you want, like, everything we've presented so far.
You sort of touched on it briefly in that, I I think the main message we want to get out is is just yes on, yes on everything, right?
I've seen that somewhere. Just vote yes everywhere. It says school.
And and that it's important to attend town meeting and at and vote at the ballot.
Right. Excuse me, I just want, I'm scrolling back to make sure that we sort of answer the question that was brought up at the beginning of the meeting, um, the two questions from Amy De Simone were, what is the situation between the teaching union contracts who delayed Wyndham Town Meeting? Uh, the other being is, has there been an update from the state on funding? And well, excuse me, the, we we met with the union earlier, um, and we're still in negotiation with them. Yeah, I really don't see much correlation on between the delay in town meeting and in that. Or at least we're trying to make it, have our decisions being made before then. And as we see on this timeline, that they're not on the timeline, but, you know, we we hope to make everything, um, you know, our targeted announcement for reductions is on June seventeenth. Excuse me, um, as far as the state funding goes, you know, that that's sort of up in the air as there was a meeting yesterday with Bruce Tar and in, I was not on it. So I I will hand this over to Julie so I don't royally mess it up. But we, it seems we got some sort of conflicting messages about what our state revenue might look like, which of course is further complicating, you know, um, how we move as a or how we think we should be moving as a school committee in in our funding. Do you want to touch on that at all? Dr. Cook and Burger or?
Sure. I I mean, I think this just goes to the period in which we're living, right? Like, this is a very dynamic situation. And and we want to be able to respond accordingly. In in order for us to do that, we need to make sure we have access to all of the resources that we requested in February, knowing that though may or may not be what we need because we just don't know yet what school will look like. We don't yet know how this virus is going to behave over the next three weeks, six weeks, six months, year, two years, right? And so we're trying to gather as much information as we can. Vinnie and myself and our incoming superintendent, Mary Beth Thanios, are on Zoom calls regularly with different constituent groups, superintendents groups, the commissioner. Vinnie, every week, and I try to join when I can, is on calls with Jay Sullivan, um, with other business managers across the state. And then I had the opportunity the other day. Maybe it was yesterday. I'm not really sure um, how to keep track of time in this situation. But um, there was a call with Senator Tar and Chairman Rodriguez where they were talking about, you know, just the outlook and the forecast for the state. And I believe if you email Senator Tar's office, they would be willing to share the PowerPoint presentation. And so the outlook looks similar that we are expecting the state is going to have to borrow money to balance the budget this year, and we're expecting massive revenue shortages in FY twenty one. But the one piece of information that was conflicting was that chapter seventy, which is a portion of our local state aid, may be level funded. And so right now, the the decision that the school committee made last week included a twenty percent reduction in chapter. And so right now, the, the decision that the school committee made last week included a 20% reduction in chapter 70. And so we receive about $3.9 million. Or we're projected to receive about $3.9 million in chapter 70 funding this year. If we look at what we received last year compared to this year, it's about, Vinnie, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's about 295,000 because it includes the Student Opportunity Act money that we were anticipating and our annual, you know, student allotment increase of $30 per student. And so that's a big difference, right? Between 20% reduction and you know, $300,000 if you will. And so that's something for us to consider because if we are projecting so conservatively in terms of what the reduction might be, which means that we're projecting it to be larger 20%. And let's say it ends up being a 10% reduction or it's level funded. The only way for us, for the district to access those funds is to go back to the voters again and ask for them to approve a, a new budget. And so just thinking about we now have our voter, our voters need to be engaged for a month, right? And vote nine times in order to, for us to successfully secure the funding that we're currently asking for. That process would have to be repeated again, once we know for sure what the state budget is and what our allocation is going to be. Right now we're hearing that that's going to be in the fall. What we do know is that because the town meeting in Wyndham is now not until July 11th, we will, well, we already have requested a 1/12 budget. And that 1/12 budget is based on our FY20 approved budget, which we all know we started the year with a deficit. And had we not experienced the COVID closure, we likely would have been ending the year in a deficit despite all of our efforts to conserve spending throughout the year. And so that, I mean, this is just how tightly budgeted we are. And I know our, the budget that you all approved in February feels like a big ask. And maybe for some, even after reducing 1.3 million feels like a big ask, but we have big work to do. We have a lot on our plates. Our students deserve a free and appropriate education. And that means we need to have the resources in order to develop the tools that we need to fully fund and support our teachers so that we can retain high quality teachers and, and other support staff, but also to be able to respond to whatever this, this new school is going to look like. So I know that was more than what you asked for, David, but that's kind of maybe all I have to say in the context of our current situation.
Right. But I think it added up answering another question that happened to find in the comments. So that was actually great. Thank you.
Vinnie, did you want to add to that?
Just to stress the fact that we, we really have been getting conflicting information with chapter 70. We've heard anything from 10% to 20. A couple colleagues of mine said 25% and then now we're hea- hearing that it could be level funded. So it, it's really just a guessing game at this point until the state puts their budget forward, whenever that may be in the, in the fall.
What? You know, I, I think a lot of people sort of don't want to hear. But I, I think what this proves is, you know, we, we as a school committee and as a leadership team, you know, are trying to be really prudent in our decision making. You know, with, with all the information that keeps changing, you know, we, you know what our budget wants to be, right? That, that, that's what we voted in in February. That's what we think is best for our school district. And we want to do as little to disrupt that as we possibly can. You know, the, the, the information we're working with just last week is, is different than, you know, we're, we're working with today. And I know that that puts a lot of people at, at, you know, at unease or in, you know, myself included. You know, that there's a, that's a part of me. It's just like, wants to, let's make a decision and move forward. But you know, if it makes the most, if it makes more sense to sort of hold off, you know, and, and if it, if it ends up sort of saving positions within the district or, you know, just enhancing opportunities, you know, that, I, I, you know, that, that's where we're, where we are right now. And, and I know that, that isn't necessarily the thing that everybody wants to hear. But, but I think that's why we're trying to be very cautious in the way we, in the way we move. You know, so I, and I think that the, the information's coming in so fast that, you know, I, I was invited to that meeting the other day, but I actually didn't even you get a chance to get on it because there's so much going on. So, you know, thank you to Julie and, and Vinnie for really just staying on top of this because it's it, it's crazy, the amount of information you're getting. And it seems like you're getting different information from different people than you.
I didn't think that was possible, but more meetings than ever.
Right, so.
But the important thing to note is from that meeting, like they gave some historical context in that. You know, when we had the great recession in oh nine and oh 10, that you know, circuit breaker was decreased by 42% and regional transportation was decreased by 30%. So to say that, you know, funding from the state might be decreased by 20% might not be an irrational statement.
Oh, no. And I, I think I'm not devaluing the estimates that Senator Tar and Representative Hill gave us because again, to that point, even if chapter 70 was level funded, but circuit breaker was 40% reduction, you know, it's I, I think the hard part is, is that we're all guessing. And, and at the same time, having to make really long lasting decisions about the future of the district. And so the timing, this is why Mary Beth and I really wanted to be clear about when's, when is the right time to make these decisions? And so the community can know when we plan to make these decisions. And June 17th, the rationale for identifying the targeted reductions is that, that should be after we receive guidance on what next, the, what the mandates are going to be for next school year. And it, it's, yet it's still before town meeting. So it's like the latest, I mean, you know, you could do it the morning of town meeting, but we feel like it's the latest scheduled meeting that you could publicly have that discussion and then take action.
Can you just real quickly, cause like you shared with us some information about what's so special about June 15th? I think the people who are watching don't know and it's kind of important for understanding what this discussion hinges on.
Yeah. So there's a couple of things that hap- that have to happen on June 15th. So by state law, if we plan to non-renew any staff members. And, and this is typical, in a typical year, these would be people who it wasn't a good fit for them or the district. And we decide that we're not going to renew someone, you have to let them know by June 15th. When you're looking at budget reductions that could potentially impact staffing, the way that that works is you have to first reduce your non-professional status folks. So these are the people who've been hired in the last two or three, you know, one, two or three years. And then if you have to go deeper, you get into what's called a reduction in force or RIF. And that's when the seniority scale comes into play. And while you're, you know, reducing non-professional status positions, you also have to be analyzing every single employee in the district and looking at their licensure and finding out, is there someone else who could do that job? Who has the licensure to do that job? So it's really complex. But I, ideally, if we knew, if we had more concrete information, we would let staff members know earlier on, so they could take care of themselves and their families and find another position. In this situation, we just don't know and we don't want to over communicate or not over communicate, but we don't want to over notify people that we're non-renewing them if there's a chance that we can retain them. Cause there's lots of implications of that, which are logical. And I'm sure you could imagine. So, but by law, we have to non-renew anyone who we, who potentially may need to non-renew. And then later on, if the, if the budget situation is different, you can recall folks, you don't have to recall non-professional status folks, but there is a whole recall process if you're talking about professional status folks. And that's really specific to our teachers, our teachers, anyone involved in our teachers' union, which is also like nurses and other professional status, our professional, professionally certified staff members. For administrators, it's really different. In this case, if you were to look at some of the administrative positions that are on that possible reductions list. What you're in, what you're voting to do is to remove that position or abolish that position. And that's, so that gets a whole different set of treatment. And there isn't a definitive timeline for you to do that. But again, like let's, what's, how soon can we make that decision? So if people can take care of themselves and their families.
I think I was talking about a different topic. Your little call with the commissioner and maybe his relationship with the opening plan with Charlie Baker.
That's my bad time. I'm sorry. Yes. So also what we, we anticipate that tomorrow, we're going to receive guidance from the commissioner of education and the department around extended school year, also known as ESY and safety. Safety supply requirements formerly known as PPE, with our new language, safety supply. So we anticipate to get that tomorrow. So new news, we were planning for ESY to be completely remote. And now we're hearing that since camps are opening up and early childcare centers are opening up, that we should be looking at, how can we provide some in-person ESY services? So that accelerates our roadmap to returning to school quite significantly. But the date you're talking about is the guidance for next year. And I apologize, I thought I said this. We're anticipating that by on or around June 15th, we will have written guidance from the department. And what we're learning is that this is going to be much more prescriptive than any of the guidance we've received so far, where there was a lot of localized decisions that could be made. This is going to be 85 to 90% mandated. So, and it sounds like there's really, this is kind of getting into what Tom and I were going to present to you later on. But spoiler alert. There's really like three choices that we are thinking about. And so we're hoping to have that guidance by the 15th. Which then can better inform some of the reductions because if we're not going to be fully in school, we, we may not need all of the staffing that we've planned. If we're going to be in some sort of hybrid mode, we might need more staffing than what we've planned. So we really just need to be conservative and, and wait until we have more, more guidance. Was that the thing? Okay.
I realized, Dr. Kukkenberger, like you, you talk about this like seven or eight times a day to different groups of people. So it gets quite redundant, but you know. Yeah, thank you.
There's a question in the chat that if the budget fails, what happens? Does this go back to a town meeting and a vote or?
Yes, there's, there's a town meeting and a ballot vote unless for some reason we reduced our budget by $2 million to get under the levy limit in Wyndham. But like you think this one point, you seven is bad, the 2 million is. Well, so a lot of people were at the hearing, right? So the list that has been put out to reduce by the 1.27 is kind of at the top. And then at the bottom is the list, like if we can't get above the levy limit, like this is what we would have to do. And that included like a lot of really drastic and scary cuts around music and art and PE and things like that. So. So yes, it's, it's, it's a, but it's the vote at another town meeting. And eventually if that one doesn't pass, then there's, we get to all get together, all Hamilton and Wyndham get to get together and try and pass the budget.
Yeah, I think it's important to, for everybody to realize like it's, it's a Hamilton or Wyndham thing. It's not just, just Wyndham or just Hamilton, right? The way that this, the regional district works, both all members of the regional district need to approve their assessment of the district's budget. What's also complicating here is that the way that the portionment works is that in order to find $1 in savings in Wyndham, it requires another $2 in the Hamilton, right? Cause it's a one-third, two-third split. So it's not just, oh yeah, Wyndham didn't pass the 10 bucks. So we'll just cut the budget by 10 bucks. You have to find $30 in order for Wyndham to realize that $10 of savings. Right? So that's really important. So this is why it needs to pass in both towns. Their assessment has in both towns in order for the, the school district's budget to fully move forward. It's a nuance that is, is not. Well, it's, it's a nuance that's kind of hard to understand unless you really go through it.
And the other thing, just to keep in mind, like some people may hear like Boxford's Board of Selectmen have decided to hold their town meeting in the fall. And because we're a two-town regional agreement, two-town regional, whatever district. The law is that two-thirds of your member towns need to vote in the affirmative on your budget. So two-thirds, in order to get two-thirds in Hamilton, Wyndham, it's everybody. But Masco will not be affected because two of their towns will be voting and the third will not. So as long as both towns approve it, their budget will be fine. So we need to keep in mind that having our town meeting is really important. And that Boxford choosing to wait till the fall had no consequences on the Masco school district. So it was important for our towns to have these meetings now because our school district would be impacted while that school district would not have been. And just so everybody knows, we have gone through this a long time ago where the budget didn't pass. And at the time we had town meeting in April and we were back in really hot circumstances in a meeting where we had to pass a budget in August again. And so it was very there was a lot of tension in the meeting. So it's very hard to have to go back to a second time if we have that town meeting.
Also, I think the other thing that's important that maybe like Vinnie I know could speak to, like if we don't approve this budget this first time around in the town meeting and the ballot, that puts us into that 1/12 budget for an extended period of time until we get a budget passed. So, um, do you want to talk about what sort of revenue impact is, or not the revenue, but the spending impact is of that?
Under a 1/12 budget as our FY21 approved budget stands, it gives us a shortfall of, I believe, roughly 170,000 per month. For every month you operate under it. So if we, you know, right now Wyndham's town meeting is scheduled for July 11th. So, you know, one month under a 1/12 budget. Although it's going to be difficult, it won't be impossible. If we continue this through September or October, we will pretty much drain all our savings at the bank account and we will eventually will have to either lay people off or furlough people to make up the additional 180,000 per month. But hopefully that doesn't happen.
Right.
You get to go to, to December, however many times that gets you. I believe it's a 45 day period every time.
Yeah.
In between votes.
Well, it's, it's 30 days for us, 45 days for them. Like we have 30 days to reconsider and they have 45 days to call the town meeting.
Yeah. So I think it's possibly there's two, two or three votes before then.
Yeah.
And what happens, Vinnie, if we get to December and we haven't been able to have a town meeting or the budget isn't passed?
The commissioner of DSE sets the budget for us and at that point, it would certainly mean almost a reduction of another $2 million. So we, we certainly don't want that to happen.
So go vote your nine times. Four for Hamilton, five for Wyndham.
So Michelle, I see a request for some good social media posts and communication about, you know, when you need to vote what and how. I think we're planning to, our original plan was to get a communication out this week about early voting. I guess at this point it, it's only relevant. We were waiting until we knew when Wyndham's town meeting was going to be, but some early voting about at least the town of Hamilton. Can we still get that?
You know, we don't even know the time for Wyndham yet.
No.
There was possibly a tweet today about going to the town meeting that featured two of the Oregon girls, but it wasn't retweeted yet.
Oh, is that my phone? Okay.
But I think David is supposed to be creating some.
I am, and it's on my.
So really, really important that we have that one seat for the town meeting. Really, really important that we have that one seat for the town meeting in Hamilton and in Wenham because, you know, people might not be getting their warrant books early. There's going to be, try to be a minimized debate so that as much information as we can get as possible. And also, there might not be the ability to show PowerPoint. So we're not going to be able to visually show our story, you know, on a screen like the way we might normally.
If there are any high school parents listening, watching, I sent an email to all the booster parents. If you, child, if your child plays a high school sport and you have not received notification from your booster parent, please give them a nudge and ask them to send that email out because that would be to over five hundred parents. So, and the same with, if you're a Winthrop parent, I did reach out to the Winthrop, Friends of Winthrop, and I asked them to do the same. So please reach out to those committees and see if they have it.
And I did, I did let the Chronicle know that the Wenham Board of Selectmen had voted on the town meeting last night. So that's, hopefully they'll cover that so that it'll be in the paper.
When do we want to, when do we want to talk about the letter to the editor that I drafted?
Now.
Want to do it now? That's fine.
So basically, we want people to know that that, those reductions are still on the table and that we will formalize them in a couple of weeks, right? Is that what we, is that the message we want?
It's really more kind of get up the vote a little bit. I sent it around, let me see if I can post it.
Putting stuff in mailboxes and the answer is don't put anything in a mailbox, that's illegal.
Yeah, no, I sent it around, I sent it...
Drop it off at somebody's house.
So Jean, the one thing, I saw that the other day, but now we actually do have a vote date for Wenham. So we should probably just update that to include that.
Yeah, that's fine. Hold on, I can share the screen, I can put it up, people haven't read it yet. Because I really want, I really worry about the, thinking about the context of the message. So I want to make sure that people hear before we sign off on it as a school committee thing, get a chance to look at it.
The eleventh.
Julie, do you know, like for, I didn't know this and it annoys me, but Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District has a hyphen in it. Do you know if the official name, the school committee has a hyphen and the official name of the school has a hyphen?
I, we always hyphenate it. I, well, I'm saying...
Like I don't, because I don't believe in the hyphen, but I know that's the official D E S E.
That is the official D E S E, how, that's part of our identity, the hyphen.
I want to know why you don't believe in hyphens.
I have lots of opinions on lots of things.
Well, if you look at our website, it's hyphenated.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I just, we should be sure that we just do that, like.
Yeah, as an Asian American, no hyphen.
And there you have it.
You'll have to explain that to me, Jean.
Asians don't believe in hyphens?
No, you're just...
Guys, guys, as much as I want to get into this conversation, I saw the prize. Because now I just opened up a can of worms. I saw the prize. Should we mention?
Four and a half hours, let's go.
Mention the nine, the voting nine times in here.
My eyes are burning.
So on the, so the second paragraph, the Wenham ballot, it's only on the back. The question's only on the back.
Did you see Craig Genualdo's recommendation to say high school stadium as opposed to football stadium?
Well, it's actually the high school field. They're using the field, right? They're not using the stands. Is that correct?
They might use the stands. If there's, so there, if there's more people than what they're anticipating, I think there's going to be seating for a hundred and fifty people. And then if there's overflow, they're going to use the stands.
Okay. So if it's raining, come early so you can get a seat. Or bring an umbrella because you're sitting in the stands. Because this is a rain or shine event, like that's important to remember.
Jean, in the first paragraph, just take out football and say field.
Oh, right.
Thank you, Craig Genualdo. Good thing he stayed on.
Yeah.
The meat of it's really happening in the third paragraph.
Yes, I agree. Is the one point two seven four the budget of the Bueker School, Julie?
Size of the Bueker, it's a little, it's one point two seven four is smaller than the Bueker School.
The Bueker budget is two point two million, I think.
Yeah, so.
It's more than half.
So it's half, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought the letter was fine when I read it, so.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to add that date, but everything still seems great, nice and clear.
That last sentence could just say, vote in favor anytime you see the word school, but.
You want to say it that way?
I mean, it's true though.
Vote yes.
So just food for thought, I know that sometimes when you tell people how to vote, it's negatively received even if it's normal.
I know, I know, I know.
It's implied what you're asking for. I think, why ruffle people's feathers unnecessarily?
Like, just we ask for your support. And the students...
Or you can just put vote on the school district's budget.
Students ask for your support.
Oh, Mahala just added some nice, if you want to vote in favor of schools, vote yes every time you see the word school.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mahala. Yes, you are helping.
Anything you want to say?
Yeah, because that way it's giving them the option, you know, telling them what to do, you're just telling them how to do it.
Is it going to say school or is it going to say? Do we know, does it say regional district or do we know what it actually says?
Yes.
I don't have my ballot anymore, I don't remember what it says.
What do you call those sample ballots are online? Let me look real quick. At least the Wenham one is, I don't know about the, I think I've seen the Hamilton one somewhere. It is a few clicks away. See, elections.
And then I don't have a distribution list, so, because I don't get any, I don't get local papers.
You can send it, you can send it to Pigeon L. and just ask her to send it out to all of our media sources.
Okay.
I believe she has a list.
It says the Hamilton, oh, by the way, oh, this is funny. In Wenham, it says the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District operating budget, no hyphen. And then when it says the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District for the purpose of the capital, has a hyphen.
Classy.
Yeah, no hyphen.
Very, very, very controversial. Is it hyphenated or not? They went, they cut it right down the middle, some hyphen, no hyphen.
Will I make a motion to accept this?
Yes, so when you send a letter to the editor, they usually have to call the people who have signed the letter. So, um, to verify, everybody wants to sign it if you put the name. So you might want to just sign it Jean Lee, you know, the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee.
Yeah, I don't want to speak on behalf of everybody, but...
Well, if we vote, then you did.
Why don't you say Chair of Capital Financial Plannings, Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee?
Sorry, I lost my screen, but Jean, if we voted, we were giving you permission.
Yeah, I just think it's, I just think it has more impact if it comes from the whole committee.
No, it does. I mean, I guess they can chase us down.
It does, but they won't publish it unless they call every single one of us and every single one of us responds to them saying that we want to sign it. So it's a process.
Can you start by saying, I don't know what it said at the top, but can you say like, on behalf of the Hamilton-Wenham School, Regional School Committee?
Yeah, but then I have to write more words to like get to this point here.
Yeah, sure, it's good.
If it's really late, I don't want to write more words.
And Jean, you know, we vote, we're giving you the authority, so A, you don't have to worry about that. And second of all, you are the person who's the chair of that working group, so.
Yeah, no, I don't mind, I don't mind signing it, I just don't want to lose the steam of like having everybody's voice included in it, so.
Great.
That's fine.
Maybe you could say something with the authority of this Hamilton-Wenham School Committee or approval?
On behalf is fine.
Nope, okay, I make a motion that the Hamilton-Wenham School Committee accepts and approves the letter that Jean Lee wrote for the local newspapers to support. There we go.
Peter with the second. I have Peter Wiltchik.
Yes.
Hi, Prima.
Yes.
Michelle Horgan.
Yes.
Stacy Metternich.
Yes.
Michelle Bailey.
Yes.
Jean Lee.
I'll say yes, so that probably, you should probably abstain.
David Plato's a yes. Okay, do we feel comfortable with our discussion on the budget for tonight? So up next is the superintendent's report. Go ahead.
Sorry, David.
No problem.
I would just respectfully request that we have the opportunity to present the roadmap to returning to school next week because we've had so many presentations tonight. But Michelle Bailey, I do not want to disappoint you and skip over my enrollment report.
I have a question for you about it too, so go.
I know what your question's going to be, I think. But I don't know what happened to my screen share, okay. Let me pull that up really quick. I just, we've been getting lots of questions about how many students live in each town. And full disclosure, I like very last minute was like, oh no, I never pulled that data. So if you're doing the math, you're noticing that there's some additional, it looks like there's some additional students on here because our current enrollment as of today is one thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight students, I believe. And this shows us having one thousand eight hundred and ninety-five. The intent of, I'm sorry, I thought I was sharing my screen that whole time. The intent of this analysis is really to show what's the breakdown between Hamilton and Wenham residents. This is not something I look at monthly because all our kids are all our kids. But the I T department was able to pull this together for me really quickly. And what you can see is that the majority of the students live in Hamilton. About thirty-four percent of our students are from Wenham, reside in Wenham, I should say, but they're all generals. And then five percent are other, which could be choice students, mostly choice students, I would imagine. So, was that your question?
So my question is, Monday was the last day to register for kindergarten. Do we know that number? And two, if I were a kindergarten parent, when might I expect to get confirmation that you got my forms and registration and that where my child would go to school?
So I'll work backwards, you won't find out where your child will go to school until August. That is our typical process because we try to ensure that we have even class sizes across the district. So we have to wait really right up until the start of school is when they find out who their teacher will be and what school they'll be in. Of course, if you have a sibling who's already at Cutler, you can guarantee that you're going to be at Cutler or Bueker or Winthrop, wherever your sibling is, you would go. So for those families, they already can, they know what school, they just won't know what teacher. Again, like with the volatility, this is more important than ever that we kind of hold off on making this decision. When will we know we got your packet? You should have, if you filled out the pre-registration form online, you should have gotten like an automatic receipt that says we have your pre-registration form, please make sure you fill out your packet. I have to just double check with Alender Brooks, who is our registrar, and find out what's her timeline and process. And I just haven't had a chance to do that since you asked me that question, Michelle. But I can certainly, we can talk about kindergarten enrollment at the next meeting and I'll get the numbers and the process and all of that for you. And I did get some questions, people were not feeling comfortable about submitting their documents via email. So Town Hall is, or Town Hall, Central Office, my office used to be in Town Hall. Central Office is open and we have been working to start to reopen in a soft way. So there are staff in the office, Vinnie's there now, if you want to swing by and drop off your paperwork. So we will receive it in person for anyone who's uncomfortable sending it by email. Or you can just mail it in as well, that's another way for us to get your full packet. We do know that we're going to have to do some paper chasing to get original birth certificates and things like that. And we're, we have some processes in place for that. But right now, we're trying to just get a sense of how many kindergartners are coming because obviously there's staffing implications. And then of course, depending what the guidance says on June fifteenth, whether we're in school or remote, we imagine that there might be some families who, we imagine that families will have different comfort levels with sending their children to kindergarten especially, as it's not required. But we'll look at all that data and, you know, kind of keep that in queue as we think about our roadmap to reentry.
Julie, is there any way, I haven't seen this year, if we can get an enrollment report on out-of-district placements, what schools are at? Not giving any private information, just kind of, we used to get that information. That'd be great, just so we can see kind of, you know, maybe we can compare where, you know, the rise is come, you know, what areas the rise might be going to.
Well, I can, I can tell you off the top of my head, the two schools that we send to the most is like, one is Landmark. We have nineteen students at Landmark and we have nine students at Hopeful Journeys. Those are the two that have the highest enrollment. And then there's a variety of others in and out of the state that students go to for specialized programming. But those are the two
big ones.
With the highest enrollment. And so I can get a current listing for you for next meeting.
Because for some people, those schools are actually closer to them than the schools that we have in the district, you know? If they were further away, they would be less attractive, maybe.
That's not...
But if I lived in Westford, I might not be as excited about sending my kind of landmark in Beverly as I would if I lived in Wenham.
Yeah, that, the proximity certainly poses a lot of challenges. Families have a lot of options.
Yeah, and the same thing. Yeah. And the same thing, you know, like, you know, schools that are out in the western part of the Massachusetts that might serve my child well. I wouldn't send them there if I could send them to a school that's close by, so. Makes sense. It makes sense that those two schools would be our most enrolled.
Okay. Um, so with that, I would ask to table the presentation on the roadmap to reentry. Mostly what we want to do is let the community know that we are in the throes of brainstorming is really the stage I would say we're in and, um, research. We've been looking across the globe at all kinds of different plans and, um, across the country, who's a little bit ahead of us? What are they doing? What are those implications? Obviously, the local guidance. But we'll, our plan is to give you an update all, every meeting that I'll be here. So, um, and I'm sure it'll continue throughout the summer. But we linked, uh, Tom and I linked this, I have to really give kudos to Tom for, um, prepping the slide deck. Uh, we linked it into the agenda so folks could take a peek at it. Of course, there's more context that goes along with it. But we want you to know that we are committed to making sure that reentry to school looks really safe, um, and is thoughtful. And we're thinking about a whole host of things, um, as we work through the process. But we'd like to do the full presentation next week if we could.
Oh, that sounds great. Uh, thanks for the work you've done, Tom. And now you've sat through a five hour meeting for nothing.
It's always a pleasure. So, thank you.
Sorry about that. Excuse me. Uh, we don't need a vote to table that, right? All right.
No, I don't.
All right, so, um, up next, just the committee reports, uh, capital financial planning. Anything?
I think we covered it.
Okay. Policy subcommittee, anything?
We're meeting.
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. So we'll review the religious observation policy feedback. I think there was some feedback about some stronger language. Um, and then maybe bring that to you on the 17th.
Michelle and Peter, I've also invited, um, Danielle Pertucci to come and speak about the wellness policies. Um, Stacy Busek, Peggy McElhenney, and, um, Alan may also join. I don't know if that's too many in one meeting, but, um, we've been reviewing the policies and they'll have written feedback, but then also available if you have questions.
That's perfect.
It'll be a party. Too bad we're not together. Peter could make us a really great dinner.
Okay, uh, moving on, negotiations, subcommittee, I believe we're meeting Monday?
Mm-hmm. Monday to meet with the Educators Association as well as the Custodial Union to continue doing what's best for the kids.
All right. Consent agenda, we had vote to approve the prior meeting minutes of April 1st.
I make a motion for Hamilton Wenham School Committee approves the meetings, um, meeting minutes from April 1st, 2020.
Second.
So, uh, Stacy Metternich.
Yes.
Ty Prima.
Yes.
Peter Walsh.
Yes.
Michelle Horgan.
Yes.
Michelle Bailey.
Yes.
Jean Lee.
Yes.
And David Plato's a yes. Topics for future meetings. Do we want to take this hyphen discussion?
We, we had it at the Ed Fund several years ago. No, no.
We need to do that in person. Have a hyphen.
I have so many questions for Jean.
Um, for the next meeting.
Can I ask where, what's going on with warrants? Like, why aren't we getting those in our consent agenda? Is there, is it because we haven't had warrants since the last meeting?
Yes, we're in off week. I just.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had them last.
We're meeting every week now, so.
I just realized it was a stupid question after I asked.
That's okay. There's no question, no questions, just a stupid question.
You're fine. It's late.
Can I bring up for a topic for next meeting is potentially bringing in Mary Beth Benos, um, a little bit earlier. You know, Julie is leaving us. Her last day, official physical day is the 30th, but she's, I believe, taking some vacation and personal days well deserved on the 23rd, I believe. So there is a week without, um, a leader. So could the next topic, next week's discussion be that?
Um.
Bring her in?
Yeah, I mean, I think we could definitely talk about, probably have to, as a consultant for.
Wouldn't she be on contract with her existing district until the?
If she's the same type of thing.
I don't know.
So we, we did this with Julie coming in too. She was.
Vacation days in her old district and then worked for us so that it wasn't a conflict.
Yeah, and you just, and you just hire them as a, uh.
Consultant.
A consultant.
Like a per diem type thing, right? So do we need to put on the agenda for next meeting or do we first?
Yeah, maybe to formalize it. I mean, I could, I'm sure we can have, work something up and just approve it.
Or, you know, not, and Vinnie can be in charge and, you know.
Well, that's, I said, if he could do it, then if we need to formalize it.
Unfortunately, not having a town meeting that timeframe, so.
And FYI, I'm not really going anywhere, just.
Going to move to the other side of the living room.
I don't even, this is the chair. I'll be right here.
Going outside to the place that.
At the new place that. I, I just have a quick question, or can we bring it up next week? The fact that four of our Hamilton Wenham Regional High School history projects moved from the Massachusetts.
Oh, yeah, that's a good call.
Oh, David.
That's a big deal because talking about breaking barriers.
Michelle, when was I supposed to remind you to remind?
We forgot. There's going to be a parade on Saturday. And if you would like to have the generals' logo chalked onto your driveway, you can contact Lisa Fibby. Um, her post is on Facebook. The basketball's basketball.
Fundraiser.
Is doing a fundraiser and it is just a small nominal fee, I think of $20. So they can do chalk if you don't want it to be permanent. Or they can do it in some semi-permanent paint for a little bit of longer luster.
I want it on the side of my house.
You can, I think they would do that, Peter.
So, yeah, that, that, it's pretty awesome. They, they, these kids have, have been doing, like, just watching the ideas for like the fundraisers and stuff is like, why don't we just give them the keys and let them run the show? They're so much, so far ahead of us.
But if we could recognize the, the, the projects next week that went forward to.
Definitely.
This would be great. Because they really did break barriers in history.
Ms. Borges does that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe she could just come and talk.
Yeah, right, yeah. Kristen Borges, Brett Burnett, Johan Knetsen, and Paige, the rock star.
Peter, would you like to, Peter, would you like to craft them an email invite?
I will do that.
The meeting and just committee and myself on there and Vinnie?
I will do that.
Thank you.
Can I make a motion that we are?
You sure can.
10:53 PM.
Stacy Metternich. So Stacy, how about you lead us?
Yes.
So Ty Prima.
Yes.
Peter Walsh.
Yes, already.
So, Michelle Horgan.
Yes.
Michelle Bailey.
Yeah, I already left.
Jean Lee.
Yes.
And David Plato's a yes. Thank you, guys. This was a long one.
All right, good night, everybody. Thank you.
End is near.
Are you guys all gathering somewhere together?
Oh, that's a good question. I think we can gather together.
Like, do you?
Oh, you mean on Saturday? I don't know. I was thinking somewhere down around like Grassy Roots or something. Or do, should we be somewhere else up at the high school?
I'll pass it here. I can see what he says.
So.
I'm going, I'm going rogue.
Going rogue.
Where are you going to be? Are you going to be by?
Institution for Savings. I'll be at the corner of Bridge and, and.
Oh, right, because that's near.
It's my house. I'm not going to, like, near there, so, yeah.
I'm going to parachute in.
Excellent. All right. I gotta go eat dinner. All right. Good night, everybody.
Hi, everybody.
Are we meeting in the same place? Are we meeting in different places for the?
Who is going to email us if Eric wants us somewhere?
Perfect.
That's good. All right, guys.
Night, everybody.